Yep, thank you. So for those of you watching in public, this is a briefing session. Typically commissioners talk about calendar items or just update each other on things that are going on in the community or agenda items we want to see in the future. Not very structured. It's just conversations and updating, like I said. And our official meeting starts at seven o'clock and that follows the agenda you see on the city commission website. With that, Ron, do you want to have any comments or updates you want to tell us?
Sure. I've got a couple of items. First, I'd like, I think you should have copies at your location of two memos from Tammy. We had a wonderful bond sale today. Really exceptionally low rates that have done well for us. And if you look at the, we had a bond refinancing which turned out better because of a better interest rate. So it almost doubled our anticipated savings. The true interest cost, a little bidder was Commerce Bank at a true interest cost of about 0.84%. And if you look on page two, that kind of shows you some of the comparisons there historically. And this might be a historic low. I'm not sure. We might have had a few that were below 1%, but it's been a long time, I think. So a great rate. And similarly, on the second sale, which are temp notes, which is our construction financing for about 28.325 million in notes. And I think these we're going to want to hold on to as long as we can because that true interest cost is 0.75.
Okay.
And so just great results. Appreciate all the hard work of Tammy and the finance team as well as our financial consultants and bond counsel. So with Baker Tilly, our financial advisors, and Gilmore Bell, our bond counsel for getting this interest. And it certainly is great news for us.
Very good. Yeah, thank you, Tammy.
Was that that big drop because we got the 2018 municipal audit done?
That certainly helped, but you know, obviously the bond rates have been coming down a lot. So, but obviously it could be we hit timing just right into a good sweet spot. So there's been a lot of speculation in the market lately about whether municipal bonds are favorable for, as an investment tool. But certainly our record has been traditionally good and we've generally outperformed the traditional market. Our bond rating by Moody's was maintained with a AA2. So again, that helped us as well. So we had some good comments from Moody's and we'll provide you with that Moody's report as well. So you'll have that for your knowledge.
I don't, did I see the Moody's report? Or did you already send it out? We usually get one or something.
I don't think we have the final draft yet.
Oh, all right.
Other items, you should have got copies of PowerPoints in your mail folder yesterday for tonight's presentations. And then some upcoming meetings, we have the joint city-county-meeting that will be held at the Riley County Commission chambers, or you can also participate virtually if that's desired. I believe both county commissions has requested an update on the sales tax ballot question is the scheduled item. And then intergovernmental luncheon is also scheduled to be virtual on Monday, August 24th. And I know one item other than updates that was scheduled late today is a desire to have a discussion. And Ed Kaelis from the Health Department has offered to make a presentation on some short-term childcare regulations that might be helpful for the state of Kansas to consider. And so there wants to be some discussion of a potential letter. We've done some intergovernmental resolutions or letters of support for some temporary regulation adjustments which makes childcare a little easier in these times. So look forward to that discussion as well. Beyond that, there should be a handout in front of you and we sent it out with the five o'clock update, so you may not have seen that. But it's kind of where we're at on the Sparks funding that we received from Riley County. Just under three million was, has been allocated by Riley County to the city. And this is a delineation of those funds as well as some of the recommendations that were suggested for expenditures. Some of those are reimbursements for us and we're still waiting to hear on a couple of items from their consultant as to whether or not they may be fully eligible. So we don't know necessarily quite what some of that magnitude is. And it may be a while before we learn of that. Some of those are related to direct aid that we've made in requests that the state essentially has until September 21st to provide feedback to the county on as to eligibility. So some of those are, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dennis actually and let him kind of run through and talk about some of our reimbursements for actual expenses and some of the other expenses we expect to incur before the end of the year that should be funded. And then also what some of the flexible components are. We did have, I think you might recall, we actually requested over 10 million in funds, which was our original per capita share based on the state's original funding provided to the county. We understand that there's a lot of representatives that are also counting on those same population numbers.
Yeah.
Which made it a little more complicated for the county. I think they did use a good process overall. And many of the things that were in our request, instead of funding through us, they funded directly to other entities. So a couple that come to mind are two and a half million recommended for the Chamber of Commerce to provide business assistance grants. We had requested about four and a half million, I think originally, in that category. Also planning to work with the Chamber in that regard, much like we did with our initial loan program that we did with the Chamber. And then also about 500,000 to the Manhattan Community Foundation for not-for-profit entities. And so I think we had more than that originally in our request. But I think they did a pretty good job of trying to meet all those that provided requests. Obviously, they had more requests than there was money available. So we're looking forward to working with you all and making some determinations. Mainly just wanted to have some discussion tonight to maybe give us a little feedback on some of your thoughts regard to some of the more discretionary type programs and why we, what we might make available. So Dennis?
Thank you, City Manager of here. Dennis Marstall, Assistant City Manager. As Ron indicated, originally when the Sparks funds were proposed, it was kind of a per-capita basis, which made up the basis for the Riley County request. Then Riley County turned around and did their own formula and basically came up with $54.92 per person as they did the distributions to the local communities. And so I want to make sure we back up that this is the first round of basically three rounds of Spark funding. And so the first round was intentional to help the local governments or local taxing entities to be able to recoup some of the costs for what they've expended related to COVID-19 issues. And so really the request is in two structures, as the City Manager was relating to. One is reimbursements. What are those expenses that we've incurred? What are expenses that we anticipate incurring up until December 30th? And then what is some direct aid? What are some community programs or other programs that we'll just get basically some bulk money, we'll have to justify and outline the program, but it's considered a direct aid category? So when we did our initial look and we submitted our expenditures, so what we've identified through basically March 1 through June 30th is $134,000, that first bullet in the memo, $134,000 in direct city expenses related to COVID. And that relates to a lot of the masks and PPEs, the cleaning supplies we purchased, that even includes some of the building upfits we had to do with installing shields at the municipal court. Well, we've done some shields in this building. Also, it involves our upgrade in technology where we had to buy a new server. We've done a lot of laptops and other things that be able to access remote for work, telework. So that was really what we've identified. And we have receipts and we've documented all those and we provided all those to the county. Then the second part of that reimbursement was what are some of the anticipated expenses? What have we started incurring in July already? And what have we identified through the rest of the year? And that amount is $873,000 through the end of December. And again, that incorporates some of the things we've already started on, more PPE. We do have more identified building outfit. And so one of those expenses in there will be the outfit to this room for some of our audio needs. And so that's roughly about $65,000 in that to give you a sense of some of the expenses that we've asked for. Also, within that, anticipated expenses would be this public awareness campaign that we're looking to move forward with for roughly $75,000. Also, you'll see we're ordering some new disinfectant machines. We've actually got a system where we make our own disinfectant now. And so part of that expense is actually building a facility, your little storage area to handle that. So that's a significant expense that we anticipate moving forward with between now and December 31st. Also, you'll see we have like water fountain, bottled conversions. We're going to do some different things with touchless utilities as we go forward. So some of these building upfits are all in that category that make up the 873,000 that we anticipate between now and the end of December. Also, the third category is a reimbursable expense was anything that we've had to pay out when the federal government did the emergency paid sick leave and when they did the Emergency Federal Medical Leave Act expansion or extension. There is a point in there before the federal government took that action as part of the CARES Fund where the city was doing some different leave time. And so it's our belief that we are eligible to capture some of that leave time, but for sure the EPSL and the EFMLA are eligible for reimbursement. But if we ask, also in addition to that, some of the payroll expenses that we'd be reimbursed for is for those city staff members who spent more than 51% of their salary time during a pay period on COVID-related activities. So you think about some of the work that the city attorneys done, city manager, our public information officer, some of our fire staff, and some of our court staff, even some of our zoo staff. And so we included all those salaries that were over 51% committed to COVID activities are in that expenditure for 875,000. So within that, there are some questions as how much of our city leave basically back in March, will we get credited back for that? But when you add all those up, the reimbursements to date, anticipated reimbursements through the end of the year, and then some of our payroll reimbursements, it's about 2 million, 2,63,000. So of our total allocation of 2.9 million, we then can look at what is the direct aid things that we would like to pursue. And so on the second page of your memo, what we included in the direct aid request is a lot of the guidelines that we've gotten from the state, but particularly from the Department of Treasury, the federal government, is they continue to send out some frequently asked question answers and to see what are some things on the criteria to be eligible for expenses. And what we've seen consistently is there is money available that would be reimbursed for a convention center marketing plan or a tourism marketing plan since the hospitality industry's been hurt so much during this virus. Also, a lot of guidance has been given that rent or mortgage or even some utility assistance would be eligible criteria to spend with these Spark funds. And so we included that. And we put on here the range because as the City Manager referenced, we had put this in our original request, but some of that was addressed by the county, worked with the Chamber, working with the Community Foundation. But some specific programs that we would see looking to move forward as long as we have the eligibility go ahead was even looking at when you did your public spaces expansion for part of the COVID reason to let businesses move some of their business activity outdoors, one of the things that that would trigger was the opportunity to do outdoor dining upgrades. So when we do some work on Points Avenue in downtown, maybe there was some opportunity for something in Aggieville. But to kind of put that on the table as well to address the action that you took to enhance public spaces or public areas during the COVID. Also, we were approached by a couple of community members about can we address putting in a kitchen at the rec center, at the Eisenhower Rec Center to help do food distribution and some other things. Initially, I said I think it will be questionable if we can relate that directly to COVID-19 rationale, but that is still on the list until we get some clarification from the state or even the county about its eligibility. So what I want to portray for you is that there are a lot of moving parts with this because we kind of move forward with the county and the state to make sure that what we're going to get funds for, we will be eligible for and not have to repay at any point in time later on. And so basically, we think everything that we've submitted so far is eligible. We'll get some clarification here in the coming weeks. As the City Manager said, the state basically has till September 15th through 20th to give us a final response. But basically what we're looking at now is about $935,000 that we need to identify as direct aid. And so that goes back to how big of a program can we do within that 935,000 for a convention center marketing campaign? How much can we do within that amount for a rent or mortgage program? And if we're going to do the outdoor dining, we've got some prices on there as well. But also keep in mind two kind of wild cards or factors within this is that we haven't even addressed the initial loan program, the business assistance program that you authorized with the Chamber of Commerce, 500,000. There is some discussion at the federal level that those entities that have done loan programs may be able to convert that to a grant program instead. And so we don't have any clarity yet if that's eligible or maybe the federal government would allow us to refill our coffers in that grant, in that loan program, but have the existing loans paid back to the federal government instead of to the Chamber of Commerce to pay us back. So again, there's some information that we still have just got to get clarity on. But also, this is one of the questions we want feedback from the commission on is how important do you feel it might be to try to recoup that money to make it a grant program? Or if you're comfortable just leaving it as a loan program? And then the second issue that we're trying to address is when we submitted our information to the county, we did not know the school hybrid learning decision. And so we did not factor in that many of our employees may want to take benefit of the EPSL Employee Paid Sick Leave or the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act. If they do take advantage of that benefit, that is something that we can be reimbursed for that we've not factored. So as we look at that, and even if we, once people run out of their federal leave, there's exploration of what would the city do to continue that depending upon how long the school structure continues. So there could be opportunity for some reimbursement. But the point is that of that 935,000, we may want to earmark 300,000 of that that they will reimburse us for, for the EPSL or EFMLA. Or if you wanted to go after the grant program to convert that, or the loan program to convert that to a grant program. So that kind of winnows down some of our options. And so we have there kind of three options that we'd like some feedback on. If you want us to continue to pursue all four of those listed direct aid requests, knowing that they won't all be funded at that maximum level, that right number, given that we only have 935,000 remaining. Or option two, do you want us to put some priority on trying to convert that business assistance loan program into a grant program or return that money? And then still continue some of those four direct aid requests, but at lesser amounts. It could be the convention center marketing could go from 100 to, from 200,000 to 100,000. And then option three, would you want to prioritize that we try to earmark what we anticipate will be some reimbursement opportunity which would benefit the general fund for the city of the EPSL EFMLA? But again, that would cause us to reduce the amount of money we'd have available for a rent assistance program or the amount of money that we'd have available to request for the outdoor dining upgrade. So it's kind of a lot of pieces that need to be put together, but we have a finite amount of money and some shifting estimates on this. So that's kind of the status of where we are right now. We're in a good position of what we've requested so far and we'll have some clarity. But then we just got to look ahead a little bit here and see where we want to put our focus for the direct aid. So I'll open it up for questions or if you have some input.
Well, being a work, a briefing session, it feels more like a work session. So I wasn't sure if we need to discuss it at a work session because I think that's probably where we give you more direction. But I was under the impression that when we got the money or when it was submitted, that it was already like line item. I didn't realize that there was still this option on how to use the direct aid piece of it. I thought that was already put into a line item. This is how we're going to use it. Do you approve or not?
So, so it was, but that was based on us getting 10.2 million.
Okay.
So we only got 2.9. So you know, we could pro-rata share everything or realistically, I think we need to reprioritize, you know, how much we want to spend on certain things. And how much do we want to recoup for ourselves? And then how much do we want to make available in other community programs? One other option that kind of deals with the economic development loan money is that of the 2.5 million that the county has provided through the Chamber for local business assistance programs is, was intended or promoted to be a grant program. So here you've got potentially businesses that are getting grant money from this CARES program where initially the companies got loan money.
Right.
Even though so, a little more favorable for the grant. So one of the things we could do is ask the Chamber to use 360 out of their proceeds to convert all ours to grants so that we're equal, treating the business community equally, that they all would get grants. And then that could be reduced from their 2.5 as an example, might be one way to take care of it as well. Don't know what the requests are going to be locally. There's also a state program that opens up tomorrow for applications for businesses and nonprofits across, across the state. So that could meet some of the need as well.
So can we have a work session on this? I mean, I would hate to decide anything right now because there's so much more questions I'm sure we might have and we can ask you those questions right now. So what you're telling me also, the other piece to this is, and also anybody can speak to any of these items, the awareness, public awareness campaign, is that already slotted or is that a decision point we need to make?
No, we haven't committed to anything yet.
Okay.
It is earmarked though in the original 800,000 to be spent between now and December.
Okay.
So that is earmarked.
And they will make a decision September 21st?
There, the state has a deadline to get back to the counties on approval of all the direct aid requests.
Okay.
So yes, is your answer. I mean, we could certainly have more detail. We've got some time to work through some of this. Obviously, we're going to get some direct reimbursement in phase one, but how we apply some of the rest of it, we've got some time. It's just if we're going to give up some of our 2 million, we certainly don't. I mean, there is some, we think that's, some of that's fairly low risk in moving forward with versus waiting till September 21st with cleaning equipment and other parameters. So if we're going to change some of that and say, well, we're, we're only going to give ourselves a million or a million and a half and we want more to go towards direct aid type programs, then that's going to impact us a little bit.
Okay.
So that's, you know, I guess the good news is, is we have 3 million versus 300,000.
I want us to take care of as many reimbursements as possible.
Right.
Is the county going to hire their own PIO? Because Vivian has had to do like two full-time jobs. And so I don't know.
Well, they're, they have not intended to, but remember, anything with this CARES Spark Funds basically has to be expended and purchased by December 30th. So when you talk about staffing, that is generally not part of the equation because that would end at December.
Okay, I get it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Dennis, the convention center marketing, are they eligible at all for second round? Is there a private business that could apply for that in some way? Or is that all got to go through us?
Yes, the hospitality industry is very eligible for the grants that open up from the state. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so in theory, they, they may be made whole or get this amount or whatever they're requesting and could potentially come off of these four direct aid.
Most, most of that, as I understand it, is really business operational expenses that they would be reimbursed for. And it, I believe that the maximum any, any individual business can get is 350,000. And then if they've received other aid, either from national, federal, like the PPP program or any of those other SBA programs or any other state or local programs like our loan programs, they deduct that from that 350 in this particular round that the state is administering. So again, part of the strategy here for using some of the county's 14.5 million was to provide some additional assistance because the state money's going to be very competitive for those funds.
In some ways, there's some benefit to see, we, the timelines won't, will they work where we know, we'll, we'll know if the second round is awarded and we still have the opportunity to award the first round? Does that, does the timelines work that way?
Possibly. I think the county has indicated to us that they're going to want to know that we've got pretty firm plans to make expenditures actually by the end of November. So if there's funds left over that aren't utilized, they have to send those back to the state. And so the county's kind of moved their deadline forward so that they have a chance to look at utilizing that money in the county before it goes back to the state.
Well, just for direction, if any, and we can have a work session, but that option three looks important to me for the staff to have an opportunity to do that with the school, kind of planting that in as, as we have to take care of the city staff there. But then as those four line items or direct aid items, you know, I would hope that there's ways to make some of those work. Of course, the, we got to find out on the food desert kitchen for Eisenhower, but the other three are big, big amounts that I don't know that we'll see any other opportunity in other rounds for rent assistance unless somehow a nonprofit gets that somewhere. But, so that's just where I'm thinking. I mean, you got to pursue them all, but of course, if there's leverage in the second round or better opportunities for the convention marketing or whatever there might be, that's all I got.
I was wondering about, what did you guys envision how, how we would administer a rent mortgage utility assistance program? We going to give Shepherd's Crossing a pile of money and say, you guys already got it figured out, do it? Or are we going to try to set up our own thing and manage it ourselves?
So I think mainly we were looking to work through existing providers who do that on a regular basis and having some methodology for determining an amount. I know there's been discussions between the community development department and Dennis, you might expand on at least what you know today.
Yeah, we've had some conversations, particularly with MISA, the emergency shelter. As a federal grant recipient, they're used to doing this. Plus also, I think back in 2008 under the HART program, they also administered a similar program when we had an economic recovery. And so they've helped us gauge kind of what that price amount could be. One thing that would be new for them is that this also could allow more for mortgage. They're used to working with folks to help avoid homelessness or those with certain income restrictions. So this would have a little bit different structure or criteria to it, but basically use some of the local nonprofits in town. But also part of that will be we have to work with the nonprofits who are used to working with the federal government and also follow the federal processes for auditing.
Yeah, that's probably the trick for Shepherd's Crossing. So, so yeah, I would, I would like us to see it, to try to get our 360,000 back out of the Chambers to something million business program. And then obviously it would help, option three would help us potentially with some of our general fund obligations for next year if we had an extra, yeah, several hundred thousand dollars or something. So either both of those, if we could get the business money out of the Chambers pile instead of our pile, then we could focus a little bit more. instead of our pile, then we could focus a little bit more on our family leave stuff.
Linda?
I wanted to follow up on the convention center marketing. I interpreted what you said, Ron, to mean that the company that owns it does not do marketing. That's left to the chamber or the city or the local folks that rent it out and use it. Is that what you're saying? Who, who markets?
So every, a lot of people do the marketing. The chamber, the convention visitors bureau does a lot of marketing. So it's, it's basically additional, what would be traditionally seen as what the, really the CVB would do to help market their community. But there's some specific guidelines out encouraging because the hospitality industry obviously has been hit hard and conventions specifically. So that was identified early on as a, as something a community could do as an eligible expense in addition to all the traditional methods. So this would supplement all of the original, knowing that the owner probably does not have a, much of a nest egg to be able to do much because they've been impacted severely.
And that would have to be done by December 31st?
I'm sorry?
That, that would have to be done by December 31st?
Yes. Well, you would have to have the contracts executed and some expenditures made. I don't think you'd have to have every penny done, but you would definitely have, have the contracts done and, and the work in progress.
So what do you envision as this marketing? Do you envision contracting with someone for a marketing plan to what the work to be done by December 31st is? What is it that, I want something tangible?
I would see us working, I would see us working close with the, the convention and visitors bureau to do some of their traditional marketing components to market the community that we're, you know, here's the precautions we have. It's safe to hold your meeting in Manhattan. Here's what we're doing at the conference center. It's a large conference center, so you can social distance. So it's, it's really more direct marketing to either folks that have come here before, that have canceled and say, hey, what do we got to do to convince you to come back?
I wondered about, I know that the governor has re, has issued, has or is issuing a new executive order with regard to back rent?
Evictions.
Evic, evictions. Is this any, in any way connected to that? I mean, so I serve on the Manhattan Housing Authority Board and the director was telling us that there are, they have some non-payment for, as time, over this coronavirus period. And it's not a lot, but it's some. And I just wondered if that's an example of an entity that is, and I don't know if there's any HUD money. I think somebody'd have to vet it. I, I don't claim to know all of that, but, and I'm sure that the area agency on aging, those are the local housing programs for low-income people. So I'd want to be sure that Dennis factors them in also and maybe MAHP. I don't know. They're more tax credit, but those are the three I can think of.
Sure.
And it, and it only relates to those in the city limits, right? Is that what you're, what, what we're talking about?
For our programs, we would likely restrict it to inside the city limits for any funding. We'd be responsible. We did ask the foundation if they were looking at providing any program type funding relative to their 500,000 that they were awarded by the county. They indicated most of their plans were to go for operational assistance as opposed to programs. They have programs in place already. Both the foundation does as well as the United Way and others that do assistance with rental. So I think the anticipation here is you have more unemployment, so you have more individuals that have had challenges meeting some rent, rent. So I think it could be a broader than the typical group, but that would be what we would work with the provider and screen or to vet those application and developing the criteria for how you would award those funds.
I was thinking people who in, for the first few months were able to hold on.
Right.
And as time goes on, they're becoming more desperate. And so there's, needs to be, I mean, if, if we can, I'd like to make sure that we actually have, and I love this term, direct aid, because otherwise it's easy for that money to be gobbled up in administrative and operational and all these other costs. I, I would be hopeful that the Eisenhower kitchen could be funded, but I understand that that's new construction and I don't know that it's going to serve the public so much as serve more individuals who, groups that want to use it. I don't know that they're, they're going to have actual food distribution inside to low-income or like, like Harvester's pulls up in their truck or that kind of thing. It's interesting, what is, tell me again, the price tag of the outdoor dining upgrades you're looking at?
So that's actually on your agenda tonight?
Yeah, but I, I was just wondering, this is 200.
So this would help to cover the, instead of us funding out of economic development, this would use Sparks funds to help fund the actual cost of the dining platforms.
Okay. And that is, I mean, I'd be interested in at least doing half of that amount, whatever it is. I think that's reasonable, you know? So what else were we going to expect it to address? So how is the county, is the county expecting to do anything with regard to housing or rents or mortgages or any, they have reserved $5 million or something for themselves? I don't know how much it is.
I think it's four and a half.
Four and a half million. Are they using all that for their emergency services reimbursement or?
I think most of it was targeted for the health department. I've not actually seen their list and I'm not sure they published their list. So, but I, I do know that a, a good chunk of it was for the health department testing, reimbursing them for some of their existing expenses and anticipated expenses, some of the same categories that we have.
Yeah.
And personnel and other factors. So I, I'm not aware and that, the only one that I thought might be doing some of the other social services assistance might be the money they were giving to the foundation. Again, the foundation is in, so basically I think they're looking at operating support. So nonprofits that typically during this time would have been doing fundraising.
Right.
As an example, haven't been able to do it, so there it's an operating loss. So they, now the, the one caveat they put on was that it was going to be, it had to be local businesses, local nonprofits, and, and those definitions haven't really been identified or what amounts would be. You know, for example, the, the state program, some, it, it specifically stated that the losses had to occur between the beginning of the pandemic to now.
Yeah.
And so a lot of, so look at what we're funding with transient guest tax.
Yeah.
So we have transient guest tax through mid-year and it's the second half of the year that they won't get the funds. So they haven't really incurred those shortfalls, so they wouldn't qualify for the state expenses.
And they're hurting to all of the hospitality industry.
Right.
I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we, I feel like you want us to make a decision, but I also feel like this is like a, a work session of some kind because we might need to dive into a few more details. So do we need to have a special meeting or can it wait till next Tuesday?
I think we can wait.
Oh.
We haven't decided yet.
You made one.
Obviously.
We're not leaving the 21st.
Obviously, for, for a lot of this, we have to wait and get approval from the state. So I think we can schedule a time to have further conversation. We just wanted some initial feedback. Are we thinking the right way as far as options?
Yeah.
And so if you have other thoughts, you can send those to us too, so it will help us. You know, we're not going to make an expenditure out to, to use these funds unless we're pretty darn sure that, that that's going to be allowed.
I think, I think we are going to be able to find a way to utilize all of these funds, especially for option three, because we don't know what that's going to look like. So I want us to, like, like I said, get more information. I don't know what we're talking about for option three. I don't even know an estimate of what that looks like, but I don't, I do think we have a space to utilize all of those funds for direct, direct aid. And I would like to see like a 70% of it go to option three and as far as the EPSL, EFMLA and then make the other portion grant, the one that we gave the loan to or see how we want to use the rest of the money. But there are so many questions I have and I feel like 15 minutes is not going to help.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I.
But I do like all the work you did. I'm so glad and I wish they did go to the $200 per person instead of the 54.
Yeah.
Was hoping for that, but it didn't happen. I'm glad we're getting reimbursed for like we are, so, and the timeline has not been very good for us and hopefully more people apply for the grants. And maybe we would be eligible for any of those connectivity pieces. I don't know if we would or not or even for round three. I don't even know what that looks like.
Well, with the feedback we had, I think we can start engaging some discussion with some potential providers that at least we can be somewhat set up to move forward with some amount.
Oh, yeah.
On some program so that when we get the approval from the county and the state, we're ready to go and we're not starting then.
And I like the four options. I think that's where we need to be thinking, the outdoor dining and all of these things. That's, that's, that's going to be with us for a while. So, yeah, I think those are good discussions. Is there anything else, Ron?
I just wanted to make you aware that obviously as we get into fall programs, we're relooking at some of our special events and our own activities and, and we're looking at things that we can do safely. And to be able to do that, we're looking hard about whether or not some of our, you know, the, the Flynn Hills Festival that traditionally the Discovery Center has done on Labor Day weekend, we're probably going to gear away from that. I mean, we usually have a lot of food trucks and a big crowd down there and that's probably not real good with where we might be. And also the, some, a couple of big fall events at the zoo with Spooktacular and also the Brew at the Zoo type of thing. So we're looking at those very closely and determining whether or not we think those could be safe and obviously they'd have to fit with the health department's plans and meet our own criteria. So we're, we're, but we do think there are, are some smaller programs that we, we can do. We've had some special events and sporting events that have gone very well. They started out a little shaky, but as we've done them, we've had good feedback from the community and appreciation for providing those opportunities and some of the camps we've done at the zoo and at the Discovery Center and other places that have been well received and we've had no issues from a, from a safety perspective. So we're looking at the gamut of things of, of our programming as long as we can provide that, not an increased cost and provide it safely.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Thank you. And we usually go around, so let me make a quick round here. Jason, did you have anything to add? Dennis already did. Tammy, do you want to add any comments or remarks? This is just odd that we were set up.
Good evening, commissioners and mayor. Tammy Galan, interim director of finance and director of human resources and risk management. Earlier today, I answered an email to the mayor, but I wanted to make sure that I shared the information with all of the commissioners. One of the things that maybe we haven't necessarily been very good about putting on your radars that in March, the federal government enacted the, and I'm probably using the wrong terminology because I'm not a legal person, the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act, which requires employers, and public employers are required to comply as well to provide emergency paid sick leave up to two weeks, so 80 hours for a 40-hour employee. And then emergency family medical leave, which Dennis has talked about being reimbursed for those, of 480 hours, of which the first two weeks can be unpaid and then the remaining 10 weeks are paid at 66% of the employee's salary. And so we've been having that as part of our policy, as required by law, since March. And we have, a majority of our employees haven't utilized the leave to date. We've had about 30 employees, so about 7% of our employees that have engaged with using that leave, but we anticipate that number growing as school reopening plans come to fruition and parents are trying to adapt. The, the parents that elect fully remote online learning are not eligible for the leave because the physical location of the school, which was very nuanced in the law, has to be closed in order for them to be eligible. So when they elect online learning, they're not eligible for that leave. And we did go ahead and make sure we educated our employees as school reopening plans came out so that they weren't making decisions that could impact their ability to use that leave. However, we do know that we've got 415 total employees. Of those 415, we've got about 80, 82% of our workforce is millennial or Gen X. So in that family, you know, age of life, we have, I'm trying to find the number. We have 292 families covered on our health plan, so about 70% of our workforce and.
How many was that?
292 families on our, on our health plan that are enrolled, which is about 70% of our workforce. And those, those 292 employees that have the insurance have 411 non-spouse dependents. So what that means is they have dependents on the health plan at varying ages and then individuals who may be older than 26 that are required to still be on the plan because they have a disability of some type. We have about, let's see, did I total that for you, mayor? I don't remember. We have about 160 families that fall into the category of having dependents that are 16 or younger. So 160 of 415 people could potentially be impacted with the school reopenings or school closure. And we think it's important just to mention that because we know that's going to have an impact on our workforce. If, if 160 families decided to invoke their right to this leave and they were gone for 12 weeks, that will have an impact on operations. And so we just felt like that was important for the commission to be aware that we could be faced with that challenge of not having the workforce that we're used to having or providing the services that we're used to providing because we may be, we could potentially be impacted by that in the not-so-distant future. We are doing a survey for our employees just to see what impact they think the hybrid format that USD 383 has come up with. The families that have children at USD 383, I believe we're finding out today which group they fill in, whether they were Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday. So we're trying to gather that information so that we can create some type of flexible environment to try to meet people where they are and still be able to have them work when they're available, if they're available, if they're not invoking that leave. But it's important to point out, employees who invoke the leave, we, they cannot work. They're, they can't be expected to work. There's no, you know, if they're able to tell me to commute, they can, but they can't be required to work at all. One of the things that all of us have a limitation with is time and we can't change the amount of time that we get every day. And then you add in this situation, we're trying to be parents, we may be trying to be teachers, six hours a day as required by the Kansas Board of Education. Sorry if I got that wrong. Teachers work eight hours a day, provide childcare. Many of us provide caregiving for other family members and least, last but not least, self-care. So we've got some potential challenges that are coming up ahead of us with our workforce that we just want you to be aware of. City leadership has been and continues to be flexible with employees trying to provide remote work where we can. We've asked for some reimbursement for some of that money. We're trying to be flexible with hours, so if people need to split their shifts up, we can do that. And then. split their shifts up, we can do that. And then alternating shifts or creating different work groups for our operations crews so we can keep working and still being able to provide as many services as we can, but still being able to keep our employees safe and healthy. And with that, I don't have any other comments for you this evening.
Yeah. Tammy, thank you for that. I think, you know, one of the things that prompted me to ask you that is something I saw that comes on my inbox all the time. And I was concerned about our employees because they do have children. But since we are coming on to seven o'clock, instead of having Commissioners ask you questions, I'd really like it if you can just maybe type up the notes you just gave us, because it's hard, you know, to write up every, for us to listen and take notes. And we might have more questions. But this is extremely important because we do have such a young staff and all the needs that need to be met. And we saw what happened in springtime. And we want to make sure that we want to keep our staff healthy, but also their families. So, yeah, if you could just send us something, that'd be great. And maybe that's a discussion we need to have in the future if there are challenges that we're facing, because we want to be accommodating and flexible. And you all have done an outstanding job, so I really do appreciate all that. Wearing two, two department head hats. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any updates from Jared? Nothing. Katie? Brenda? Erin?
Is it required for when to be at home if Ron's here? Is that, I missed the first part of what, where when is-
He's not well.
Okay.
So, so he's participating remotely. And so I'll, yeah, no, and so I filled the empty seat. I'm not part of the decision-making train.
Thank you. Linda?
I'm out, I'm out here, Rucha. I just have got the mic muted and the video off.
Okay. Well, thank you. Linda, did you want to say anything? Lynn, did you have a comment? Updates on anything?
No, I, I had talked earlier in the week with Jason about the problem here with the, with the school and what you're going to do. And I don't know, I get some wild ideas sometimes. And I was thinking to myself, well, this could force us into some kind of a ask-for-Spark money and set up a city daycare plan for the employees. You know, we have a zoo facility that was a daycare center, we shut down. And maybe that's an option. I don't know. If we can get the Spark money to fund it, we might want to consider that rather than have a hundred-and-sixty employees be gone.
No, I think that's a great idea. I think one of the things we're going to do at the intergovernmental meeting is have Ed Callis. There was several people that wanted to be part of the childcare discussion, because it's not just childcare, we're looking at instruction care also. So at intergovernmental, I think that's an idea to bring up and see what we can do. And maybe we can use Spark money, because that is the biggest challenge. When we're talking about childcare, we're not just talking K to five years old, we're talking about infancy to twelfth grade and how to do all of that. So, yeah. Thank you, Lynn. Anything? Linda? We've got about three minutes.
Okay. I would just say that yesterday we had a, held a law board meeting, the August meeting. And one of the things we did was consider and review a, an employee relationship policy. And I think it's been vastly improved. I think the director rewrote it, made sure it was rewritten when he arrived a year and a half ago. And now with input from all the employees, it's much, a much better policy. And I've asked for an update in the, at the next meeting of the, all of the different sources of coronavirus funding that our C P D is getting. So just, you know, there are lots, we have meetings all the time and webinars and Zoom and, but nothing-
They got new uniforms.
Nothing that's revolutionary. And the Riley County Police Department has acquired new uniforms. And they're, they've had wool pants for all this time. And now they're, they're more of a wash-and-wear and lighter weight. So it's a different day, it's time, pastime.
Mark, did you have any comments? You're good. Okay. So I think what I'll do is just, did you have some there? Yeah. Let's take a two second, two-minute break, water, bathroom, whatever you want to do. And then we'll come back and start the meeting officially.
Sure.
Okay, everyone, we are starting our meeting. This is the City Commission meeting, Tuesday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Sorry? Is everything okay? Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We accepted public comment in writing prior to tonight's meeting. And any comments submitted were given to all members of the City Commission. We will announce on each item whether we received any public comment. We are also allowing public comment from those attending the meeting in person tonight. Each person, each public comment should comply with our public comment rules. Each speaker has five minutes. Please clearly state your name and address for the record and for those listening or watching this evening. Our first item this evening is the proclamation. Brenda Wolf, our city clerk, is going to read it. And we have President General Myers, President Myers to accept it and make a few comments.
Whereas the Kansas State University Foundation began the Innovation and Inspiration Campaign on July first, two thousand and ten, with a goal to raise one billion dollars for Kansas State University. The KSU Foundation and Kansas State University launched the public phase of the campaign on October ninth, two thousand and fifteen. After surpassing the original one-billion-dollar goal in April, two thousand and seventeen, the Campaign Steering Committee, KSU Foundation, and university leaders decided to extend the campaign until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, with a new goal of raising one-point-four-billion dollars. With cooperation from the City of Manhattan and the community, which has been recognized nationally as having one of the best town and gap relationships with the university, more than one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand people, companies, and foundations have contributed to the Innovation and Inspiration Campaign. Two thousand eight-hundred-and-forty-eight new scholarships were created to support K-State students. Sixty-two facilities were built or renovated. And one-hundred-and-twenty-one faculty chairs, professorships, and awards were created. Now therefore I, Rucha Reddy, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, call upon all citizens of Manhattan to recognize and celebrate the one-point-six-billion dollars raised by the Innovation and Inspiration Campaign for Kansas State University, and congratulate Kansas State University, the KSU Foundation, and all who meant campaign a success.
Thank you, Brenda. We originally thought we were going to be having a Zoom meeting, but we are having a live meeting. And President Myers, if you'd like to make a few comments, please come on up and do so.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. And thank you for that resolution. It means a lot. I think I should join the football team because I think I just gave a double head fake to Greg Willens, the president of our foundation. I thought he was originally going to be here. We, we both changed schedules, so I'm here, he's watching on Zoom.
Oh.
He would, he would be here because he cares deeply about this. I was at the original meeting back in two thousand and ten when we sat around and said, we have to have a capital campaign. What should we, how much should we try to raise? And being good Kansans, nobody wanted to say the B word. The last campaign was five hundred million. But our consultant we had, an outside consultant, says it ought to be at least a billion. So we said it at a billion. And then in two thousand and sixteen, we were so, so successful, we decided to extend the campaign for four years and move it to one-point-four billion. And we actually, I'm sorry, one, yeah, one-point-four billion, we actually ended with one-point-six-billion. The last chunk of money that got us over the one-point-six at the end of last fiscal year, so the end of June, was actually from a Manhattan family that are very supportive of K-State. The importance of this is a couple of things. One is we have a great foundation. If you look at, at the work they do and you compare it to other foundations nationally, educational foundations, they're often in the top decile of performance, certainly the top quartile, no matter how you look at them. So that's, that's one thing. The other is the number of people, you know, it's, it's over forty-some-thousand people that donated to this campaign. And there are a lot of people who have passion for K-State, for the community, and they want to see us prosper despite reduced fundings and other areas. So that, and there, there, a lot of them made some sacrifices to, to give their gift to Kansas State University. And it's obviously going to have a big impact on our, on our community. Because this is going to go, most of this is people stuff. There's some capital improvement projects. So some of the athletic stuff, that's part of it. A lot of it's people, scholarships, faculty chairs, departmental head things, programatics, they're going to hopefully attract people, students particularly, and faculty to Kansas State University. So thank you for the resolution. We very much appreciate it. I know if Greg, Greg were here, he'd echo all of that. He's been a terrific leader in the five years he's been here at the foundation as the leader. So, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, President Myers. And you're absolutely right. We have, we have a really good relationship with the university and we do have wonderful community members. So-
Number four.
Yes.
The person ratings that just came out. And we're one, two, and three for other things, but we're number four in the country in the Princeton survey for best-town-down relationships. So the beat goes on.
Right.
And, and we have lots of reasons to cooperate, obviously, lots of reasons.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you for making the journey down here. I know you have a lot on your plate this week. So thank you. With that, we'll move on to, we have Commissioner comments this evening. Commissioner Exterbrook?
Yes. Bear with me. I have, I have quite a few comments I want to make, and I'll try to be quick. So I'm just going to say this is tremendous time, and there's a tremendous amount of negativity in our public square. And I want to use these, this comments, this Commissioner comment time to thank several other people and organizations in Manhattan that are doing the necessary work to keep us moving forward. I'll update you on some of their accomplishments. We hear so much about, you know, being reactive or not doing enough, that sometimes we fail to pause and see what others have done, what our community has done. In the middle of a battle, it's easy to get laser-focused on the problem right in front of you. And in doing so, you lose the broader sense of the progress in the war. There's no doubt much more needs to be done. With the new outbreaks today in Manhattan and Northern Riley County, it is clear we are entering, entering a very difficult time. But before we go down that road, I want everybody to please pause, please pay attention, and please appreciate the success that we've had so far. I'll start with, I reached out to Riley County Health Department, Julie Gibbs, and asked her and their staff, what were some successes so far in the last five months? Contact tracing was the first thing she mentioned. They have a robust contact tracing team with over twenty contact tracers to be able to tackle the disease investigation, reach out to all the contacts in a very timely manner. This is key to help stop the spread. Communication was their second point. One, one great thing our community does is have effective communication with the Health Department and our local providers, the hospital, K-State, LaFine, the city and county commissioners, and our news outlets. It's important for us to be consistent and better plan and prepare ourselves for what is to come, as well as dealing with problems as they arise. The news releases, thanks to our P I O, Vivian, and others, Riley County Health Department shares information on a daily basis, whether it's through their press release on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Facebook Live, K-Man updates in the morning, Facebook posts, et cetera. And then testing. Riley County Health Department has increased testing in our area, not just for symptomatic individuals, but they have completed population health survey, reached out to those who want to be tested, and now are offering a one-day free testing at Northview at the Vineyard Church this Thursday from eight AM to, eight to ten AM, twelve to two PM, four to seven PM. And this is for anyone. And it's, you don't need symptoms. You can come during those periods of time, get a test, and also get a free meal. They've talked, our planning is another bullet point here. Riley County Health Department has weekly meetings with the schools, and you're going to hear more about this in a minute, but nonprofits, businesses, to determine what they need to be doing to keep their employees safe and their clients, customers, students safe. This is an ongoing learning experience as the guidance is constantly being updated. The Health Department, of course, gathers their guidance from the CDC and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Now I'm going to move into another organization that's been doing a lot and we've heard about recently at the Commission, but maybe people in the community would like to know more. at the Commission, but maybe people in the community would like to know more. And that's the Riley County Police Department with Director Butler. Reached out to him and others today in Riley County PD. They've been operating without a proven playbook during the pandemic and the police reform movements. And RCPD has experienced community success with the peaceful protests, their ability to engage in thoughtful dialogues. RCPD staff, Director Butler, have attended every event, meeting, and responded positively to every invitation received to discuss how RCPD serves the community. And of course, the work continues. RCPD has updated their website, comprehensive explanations on hiring, training, policies. Again, they're accredited for the ninth time and remain the longest accredited departments in Kansas. They presented a flat budget, filled all dispatcher positions, restarted a community discussion with fair and impartial policing. They launched sexual assault awareness education campaign. And they're fortunate to, to this point, have avoided any positive COVID-19 cases while almost maintaining the same level of services. They implemented new police training curriculum when the police academy was shut down temporarily. They, we heard earlier, modernized their police uniforms from the 46-year-old fabrics. They combined the National Night Out with Torch Run for Special Olympics. And they've learned that their, recently learned their proactive policing strategies have reduced hotspot crime. And that is going to be the subject of additional research by George Mason University. I'm going to move on to the economic people that I reached out to, Downtown Manhattan Gina Scroggs. And DMI quickly, you know, asked, what, what have you guys been doing in the last five months? And this is for everybody. As you think about this list, all of these things have been happening in just the last five months. DMI quickly built their page, their website, to reflect how downtown businesses could shift to continue serving the public. They translated the info into social media platforms. Hundreds of promotions were generated during the first 11 weeks. And today, they maintain their COVID Business Update page, which is downtownmhk.com/dailyupdates. DMI worked closely with the team at MHK Together. It seems like MHK Together was a decade ago, it's so long ago. But that was the first kind of event that happened at the beginning of the shutdowns. And MHK Together was 502 Media and the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation to get all those downtown businesses online, educate them about backend processes, gift cards. DMI worked to have a unified signage on all their doors and windows. They're, they built plexiglass, they got hand sanitizer and masks before much of it was required. They even found a winery in Paxico that would bottle, box, and earmark hand sanitizer for them. So DMI is proud of the relationships, again, that they've had with their public health officer, the medical community, the economic recovery teams. And they are excited about the open-air markets, and we'll hear more about that later. Gina said that it's heartbreaking and frustrating, but here, there, there have been silver linings and little victories along the way. Definitely have learned a lot about what it means to be resilient. Moving on to the Aggieville Business District, I asked Dennis Cook for some updates. Dennis said they've had four, they've added four freestanding and sanitizing stations on the sidewalks with plans to do four more. Their businesses have undergone significant remodeling to accommodate new health requirements. And all businesses that are open to the public have reduced their seating capacities, added hand sanitizer at the door, required their employees to wear masks, and trying hard to get their customers to follow the same health standards. 383. I talked to the superintendent, Dr. Wade, and Carla Hagemeister, the school board president, and one, and Michelle Jones. But this first line, just think about this, it's hard for me to wrap my, my head around it, but 450,000 meals were provided to children in the community since March. 450,000 meals. They've got online STEM, that's science, technology, engineering math. They've got that online now. They, every educator in USD 383 is adapting to not only how they keep students safe, but also how they teach. So many instructional staff have been involved in development of USD 383 reopening, including work to create online units aligned with state standards, training modules, and their professional colleagues, parents, and students, and specific focus on instructional needs for our at-risk students. Maintenance and custodial, nursing service, child nutrition, transportation, other support services have created, all created new plans for a variety of scenarios in the midst of changing guidance. 383 staff, students, and parents have sustained a level, a high level of engagement and commitment throughout the entire five months of COVID-19 so far. They have remained supportive of one another and of families. They remind one another that people are hurting and angry about what is occurring, providing grace whenever possible. In addition to all the work regarding COVID, all the things that go along with operation of a district continue to get done. It's a testament to the 383 folks. USD 383 recognizes starting school, and the hybrid learning model creates challenges for families that are doing what they can, and they're doing what they can to help families find childcare if they need it. For example, the Boys and Girls Club can serve 80 students a day from Group A and 80 students a day from Group B. Pricing is extremely low for families who are struggling, and efforts are being made to get additional funding, locations, and personnel to expand further. The school district stresses the continued importance of our community partnerships. USD 383 has been in almost daily contact with Riley County Health Department over the past five months, and they formed a new partnership with the MHK Clinical Task Force. K-State Department of Education also worked with USD 383 to develop an engaging online instruction and, and that is aimed at achieving success in remote learning. They're working together for a safe and reopening of our schools. The Chamber of Commerce. We kind of know, but the community might not know, all the things that we've asked and that they've gone on to do. The Manhattan Chamber of Commerce with Jason Smith. Over 1,500 masks have been available to local businesses through the Chamber. Manhattan Emergency Business Loan Program with the city funds. They, 86 loans dispersed totaling $387,000 into local businesses. Jason Smith has co-chaired 12 reopening task force meetings so far, beginning in late April. The Chamber staff directly contacted over 800 businesses during the early stages of the pandemic. They've assisted numerous businesses with information and technical assistance relating to the SBA, the EIDL, and the PPP. They promoted local, state, and federal funding opportunities via email, social media, websites, the Chamber programming, and regional media outlets. And they've been working with Riley County on the Spark Funding Programming that we talked about earlier, to provide direct aid to local businesses. Also, Janet Nichols has maintained the, as the military community liaison, maintained regular communication with Fort Riley and has maintained and has remained engaged through the recent change of command. Economic Development Staff is actively working on projects with prospects who are considering moving their businesses to Manhattan, and there are currently 22 open projects. Through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, GMEP, new business attraction marketing materials have been developed to include digital marketing brochures, new website, project proposal templates. GMEP kicked off its biosecurity marketing campaign in July. You know, positioning Manhattan as the leader in zoonotic disease research as a key player in the prevention of future pandemics. Economic Development Staff have met with 30 primary employers for interviews in the past two months as part of the Business Retention and Expansion Program. A survey of primary employers in the region was completed in April to understand the impacts of the COVID pandemic on local employers. Recently, they established an agreement with Spark Manhattan for Entrepreneurial Ecosystem Development Services and working on initiatives. The final is, I think, one of our best-kept secrets, and I wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to be recognized, is the Konza Prairie Community Health Clinic. Danny Holliday sent me some information about what they've been up to. And since the start of the pandemic, Konza, which is attached with the Health Department, they've, provides for the community, they've, they've provided for the community 1,093 COVID swabs, evaluation of vitals, and continued, continuity of care visits in the respiratory tent. Konza has contributed over $12,000 in staff time to the COVID response in Manhattan. They have continued to provide essential healthcare services throughout the pandemic and are now open for all routine medical, dental, behavioral health appointments. Silver lining for them has, of the effort, has been the identification of patients through our triage and scheduling process who do not have primary care, do not have a primary care provider in Manhattan. Patient resource coordination staff have connected 177 patients without a primary care provider to communicate the importance of routine healthcare and assist patients with setting up a visit. Konza continues to leverage their resources to align with local response efforts and meet community needs during this challenging time. So I, those are some pretty amazing things to have been accomplished in five months during a pandemic. I wanted to recognize and thank those organizations. And we often hear and kind of think that not a lot's getting done or not enough's getting done, and it's, it's, if you don't take time to realize how much is getting done and kind of adjust, then you don't really continue to, to move forward. So I wanted to share that, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Good remarks, but remind me to limit Commissioner comments to now. Good job, Aaron. Linda?
Yes, I'd just like to call attention to the mhksafeandopen.org. And that's a program, a web program that the city and the Chamber and, I'm not sure who all, have been cooperating on. Those are businesses that have committed to following the CDC guidelines. And if, so if you are hesitant to go out in public, you can check that website and go to those businesses and feel confident. That's the plan, that's all I can tell you. I also, there's a parallel effort. That is the Flint Hills SafeAndOpen.org. And I serve on the Flint Hills Regional Council. And so you would know Christie.
Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, from, who was with the Chamber. And she now leads the North, the Flint Hills Regional Council, and they have an effort. And so the information from the MHK Safe and Open populates the Flint Hills Safe and Open website. But the Flint Hills effort is seven counties. So addition to what's in Manhattan, those other six counties surrounding Fort Riley, that's the purpose of the Flint Hills Regional Council, or the original purpose, was to support the Army and Fort Riley. And so that continues on. But it's an effort to expand the effort, to assure the public that they, that businesses are looking after their best interests and are safe in, for them to, to come in. So I wanted to just really highlight that. I think it's a great effort.
Thank you, Linda. Commissioner Haddasal?
I don't often have a chance to speak with the K-State leadership, so while you guys are here, I appreciate to have an opportunity. I would, I would ask that you guys not panic when the COVID numbers start going up with the kids on campus, as they're starting to just a little bit, based on the fact that, I was, I was talking with Julie Gibbs at Rotary Friday morning, and she said, yeah, and she acknowledged that 80% of the cases these days are asymptomatic. And we're not going to stop young people from hanging out unless you send them home, and then we're really going to be mad. But there's, with all the classes almost online to start with, I know my daughter's only got one in-person class, and it's a chemistry lab, which is hard to learn anything online in chemistry lab class, so. Just, I know you guys have spent a lot of time working on a plan. Don't, I would ask that you realize that, okay, some young people are testing positive, but unless people start getting sick in a, in a significant dangerous kind of way, if every, if 80% of the people are testing positive or asymptomatic, I think they're, yeah, and they're going to be treated at home by themselves. They're not even going to do anything if they're asymptomatic. It's going to be a hard time to get them to even stay home. I would ask that you, yeah, be just a little bit patient and watch things play out. And if things get bad or start becoming a problem where your, your students are actually sick or the professors are becoming ill in a significant way, I would, I would really like to see some, holding the course, hanging tough, hang in there, and, and don't panic and pull the plug on, on the semester and the students, everything, as soon as you start getting the numbers peaking a little bit, which they probably are. But as long as everybody's generally asymptomatic and, and healthy, I would appreciate, I would, I would like to see they continue to stay the course, keep things going according to the plan that you would have developed over the last few months. Thanks.
Thank you. When, did you want to add any comments? Commissioner Butler?
No, I'm, 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 I'm good to go. I don't have anything to add. I'll, I'll cede my time to Commissioner Estabrook.
Okay. You should have all done that. So I have a few comments. You know, I think, first of all, if you have not taken the census, please do so. It's so important for our community. The percentage has been less than in the past. I understand these are challenging times, but the, it's such a simple census, but it's so important for our community, for the school district, for university, for all the projects we do. So please make sure, if we don't meet the 50,000 population threshold, we won't be eligible for lots of funds. And that's your taxpayer money that somebody else is using. So please be aware of that. If you haven't registered to vote, still register to vote. If your address has changed, or if you've recently, your last name has changed, for whatever reason, make sure you check and see if you are still a registered voter, where you need to vote, advance ballots, all of these things. We are in August, and things are going to happen pretty quickly once September, October come here. So just make sure you take a look into that. Commissioner Haddasal had mentioned about not to panic, and I agree, we should not be panicking. I think the current positive, percentage positive rate in the Riley County area is 3.6. But if we make it to 10, if our percentage positive increases to 10%, K-12 is going to go all online. And while 18-year-olds and over can manage at home and studying, preschool to 12 may not be able to handle it so well because they, they're going to need some help at home. And that makes our parents go home, and it just becomes more challenging. I'm thankful that the K-State had put out a press release today to make sure that it's not just the 90% that are doing the right thing. We need 100%. That's the only way this is going to work. And, and this is important for me personally as well, is because my niece lives in Indianapolis, and she tested for COVID two, two months ago, just mild symptoms. She got over it. And then two weeks ago, she was just coughing and kind of had nausea. My brother, who is a physician, thought she had an appendix problem. So he took, took her to the hospital. And then she was on a ECMO, which means your heart stopped, and they had to resuscitate her three times. He had 10 physicians working on her. 25-year-old, healthy girl, he thought it was an appendix. And my, my brother, like I said, is a physician. He thought, because he has access to so many physicians, he was able to keep her alive. She stopped breathing several times. He was scared out of his mind when he saw the flat lining on the machine there. They thought she might have to have a heart transplant. Fortunately, she was young enough that her body was resilient enough that she was okay in the sense that she didn't need a heart transplant. But she couldn't breathe still. Her oxygen levels were very low. She went from 10% something to 45%. All of these numbers he was telling me. As they were taking this ECMO off, and to my understanding, that's what, it's an artificial machine that keeps your heart pumping. As they were taking it out, her heart valve tore or ruptured. I don't know the correct term for it. So they had to do open-heart surgery on my niece just a few days ago. So this is extremely important. When we think a 25-year-old is healthy, nothing's going to happen. They're finding out that myocarditis does happen. It's not just lung issues. It's not just lung issues. She had a lot of water and other fluids, even in her lungs and her heart. 24-hour nursing care. She's at home because they didn't want to leave her in the hospital, but she's not going to be 100% for years. And she's, she was in med school and doing her rotations, and now she can't complete that. So this is real. So let's just make sure we understand that. And as optimistic as I want to be for everything to go well, we also, it also depends on the responsibility all of us take in this crisis. And I want us to take it seriously. If we don't, shutting down K-State or shutting down K-12 will not be our biggest problem. We will have other problems. So please, please make a commitment to take all the precautions seriously and adhere to them every time you're out of your home. And I didn't want to make something personal and say that tonight, but I felt it was necessary because of what we're seeing around us. We're going to, we're going to do fine. We're going to pull through it, but it's going to take all of us and not just a few of us. I didn't know, since we're talking about K-State so much, if President Myers wanted to add any comments at this time, or are you good?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
We've already written on this a couple of times to everybody, and it is all of us. It really is. So I doubt that the White House.
Got that virus on campus very much. Somebody brought it in, or they went out and got it from the community. Our campus is pretty darn safe. It can be made unsafe if people on campus don't do what they're supposed to do. And we have, of course, a pretty high percentage of high-risk individuals on campus, both students and others. So we appreciate what the city's doing. We think this is all of us together. The commentator, generally a conservative commentator, writes for the New York Times, you all know David Brooks, on PBS when this all started, he said, "The only way we're going to get through this as a nation is if we sacrifice for the common good and we have social solidarity." When that breaks down, then we're in chaos, anarchy, and anything goes. We can't control those students. You can't control the population of the city. We know that. But we can strongest guess and be good role models for the behavior we'd like to see them emulate. And if we do that, we'll get through this. John Rolfe, who's on the Board of Regents, who owns a lot of restaurants all across this country, he said, "We finally figured out that masks are good for business." If you look at his business, all that, he owns the, what is it over here on the West Side? The, the Mexican place, I guess it is?
Carlos O'Kelly.
Carlos Kelly's, yes. So he, he owns that in town. He's looking into other things. But he said, "We were skeptical at first, but if you look at his, if he were to open his books and show you what the restaurants have done that, that he manages," and he just bought 28 of Applebee's in West Virginia, so he's a national sort of guy in this, this space. He says masks are good for business. And they've done, yeah, it's gone down, but it hasn't gone down very much. So this is economic, it's personal health and well-being, it's family health and well-being, the health and well-being of our community, overloading the hospital. On a call with K-Bor folks tonight, Doug Gerard, chancellor at KU, medical doctor, said, "With the new cases they're seeing, more 18 and 24-year-olds, because now we're out going to school, and more of those being admitted to the hospital." So we also have to watch the hospital rates and see if we can overload our medical. So we're in it together. Social solidarity will get us through this thing, and it's, I don't think that's a, that's a bad idea right now. And then sacrificing for the common good, and we all have to, we all have to do this. So thank you all for what you do to make it possible.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments as well. With that, if there are no other commissioner comments, we'll move on to consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. The commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on, for the items on the consent agenda? And, and there's two of them that I, I think Ron probably would, should highlight, the budget as well as the sales tax one.
So thank you, Mayor. Just as you indicated, the last commission meeting, the commission approved on first reading the budget ordinance. The budget ordinance for 2021 is proposed to be $68,854,284. That's up from 66.7 billion this year, and most of that increase is due to accumulated sales tax that will occur in the special sales tax fund for the recreation and trails component, having to budget that extra cash. We did keep a flat mill levy at 49.798 mills. Also, there's no cost of living or step increases for employees. We also have the memorandum of agreement with the Local International Association of Firefighters Local 2275 on the consent agenda, reflecting a three-year agreement, and also no increase in wages for 2021. So it's a, pretty much a flat levy, and that's why it's on, on consent, because there was a unanimous approval of it last, last meeting. I also thought, relative to budget, I thought I'd share the, I, I shared with the commissioner earlier at briefing session, but it's some, some great news. We sold some bonds today. We had a bond refunding, as well as some temporary notes, which is our construction financing. The low bidder on the bond sale refinancing was Commerce Bank at 0.84%. Just to compare that, there are no zeros on, going back to 2011, on any of those. So last June, when we had a bond sale, it was 2.95%, which is still a great rate, but that's pretty incredible. And then we sold 28.3 million in temporary notes. A lot of major projects on this, and that true interest rate is 0.75% to Huntington Securities. So we had multiple bidders. We maintain our AA2 bond rating from Moody's, and so we're really pleased with those results. We also have the resolution on the agenda for authorizing the commission to put forward a special question for the, a one-half cent sales tax to be put on the November ballot. It's due September 1st. Commission's had discussions several times at the previous meetings. Again, this special sales tax question provides for 70% of the funds that will be utilized for property tax reduction and debt and public infrastructure, 20% for job retention and expansion initiatives, and 10% for workforce housing. Again, this, if, if it's approved, wouldn't take effect until 2023, when the current Riley County sales tax is due to expire at the end of '22. So this would replace the city's portion of that particular tax, and it would be citywide instead of just in the portion of the city in Riley County, and would also generate more than twice the amount of annual funds, about 6.5 million annually. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Yes, Commissioner Estabrook?
Just, I think we received some public comment from the chamber and others. That's available online, right?
Not for the consent agenda?
Oh, for the...
I didn't see any. Were there any for the consent agenda? Okay.
Yeah, for the sales tax question, the resolution. I just, that was positive feedback there. I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
I haven't seen it. Was it?
I don't think I've seen it either.
Maybe, when was it?
There's this public comment for the agenda item. Today, they sent it in this afternoon.
Could you read it out loud?
I left home about 3:30.
I don't know if it's there. It's not, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on, on both of those items that was just discussed there. The, the first being the, the city budget. Of course, I'm pleased that we've got a flat mill levy, but the city staff basically has been empowered because the commission hasn't given any definitive guidance on how to get to this flat mill levy. So what that means is that money will be diverted out of the water funds to help, help make this happen, and that whatever cuts happen, like pool closures or whatever, have all been given to the city manager to decide how to do. And I want to be sure everybody understands that. Because we did not get down in the weeds and say, "Do X, Y, Z." And that's where we're at right now. The second thing is the sales tax initiative. I'm 100% for that, though there's been a lot of things posted this week saying it's a tax increase. And so we've got to emphasize that while this is going on, the November ballot, it would not take effect till 2022. And before that happens, the current economic development tax sunsets. So there is no sales tax increase in the city of Manhattan.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Do you want to read it out loud to us? Thank you, Brenda.
To the Manhattan City Commission, thank you for your leadership at this critical time in our community, community's history. The Manhattan Airing Chamber of Commerce is proud to be the city's partner in developing opportunities for economic prosperity for Manhattan residents. We have a long history of supporting some of the largest endeavors in the community's history. We have a long history of supporting some of the largest endeavors in this community's history, endeavors that continue to be the focal point of growth and quality of life for Manhattan to this day. We support the city administration's recommendation to approve Resolution Number 081820E, which calls for a special election of the city of Manhattan for a 0.5% sales tax. The funds generated would provide property tax relief, new jobs, and economic prosperity, key growth, infrastructure, and workforce housing. The chamber supports all of these initiatives and the proposed lit in the ballot language. Additionally, we can't think of a more important time to invest in recovery. COVID-19 has hurt our community and could hurt it further. The passage of a sales tax in November will create opportunities to assist in recovery. As you know, we used economic development funds this spring to help nearly 100 businesses stay open in difficult times. We may face additional challenges that require resources soon. In preparation for this discussion, the chamber has undertaken polling of the community to determine the current level of support for this proposal. We saw strong support for both asking voters to approve a sales tax collected through the entire city of Manhattan, as well as designated proceeds for tax reduction, infrastructure, and job creation. We also know there is a strong support for housing, which is a primary component of attracting a skilled workforce. Additionally, we were happy to see that Manhattan residents are generally pleased with the community's leadership and quality of life. However, they are concerned about job opportunities. We believe very strongly that the ongoing implementation of Region Reimagined will enhance job opportunities and help us maintain the kind of community that we want. The passage of this issue is critical to continue to move forward on these initiatives. We are pleased to support this resolution and look forward to working to inform voters about the benefits of continued growth and economic prosperity. The Manhattan Airing Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors approved August 18th, 2020.
I had not seen that. Was there another one also?
Not for the sales tax, no.
That was both of them, okay. All right. Yeah, thank you. I did not see that earlier. I will say, I, I think we did gave, give our city staff direction about how we want funds utilized for next year regarding parks and recreation, as well as some of the other departments. And it's, it was very clear the flat mill levy was there because we did not give COLA or step increases. We did have a lengthy discussion about the 27th, is it the 27th pay period and such? So I think we, we gave direction where we needed to and left it up to them to make the other decisions, also knowing that spark money, we would be eligible for some of those spark money, money funds, so it might fill those gaps. As much as the sales tax discussion is happening, and I am a proponent of doing it on behalf of the city, I will be voting no on it because I don't think this is the right time, the right year to be doing this. I think next year would have been more preferable. It's not because I don't believe in it, in the spirit of why we're doing it, but I just feel this year with so many challenges, the, there might not be enough appetite for, for us to reach out to our residents and ask for a sales tax on the, on the, on the November election. With that said, are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Hattasol?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that, Brenda, would you please call the roll? Mayor ready? Yes, except on item H. Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0 with the exception of item H, which carries 4 to 1. Thank you, Brenda. We now are moving on to a public hearing. Vacate public utility easement for the Walmart Blumont Center, VA 2002. And Rob Bott, our director of Public Works, will be presenting this evening. Hi, Rob.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Rob Bott, Director of Public Works. Very quickly, this has to do with, this has to do with vacating an easement in the Blumont Center, playing unit, unit development. I think most of you are familiar with the sinkhole that was created last year with the Tuttle Creek near flood event. Although controlled releases were sent out of the tubes of high water, we did experience two sinkholes. This one was basically near Walmart. We had about 135 lineal feet of 36-inch sanitary sewer, which serviced all of the Northview area, and also serviced a great deal of K-State as well, of their northern property that ran along the Marlap, Trunk Main, and then came down the Casement Interceptor and so forth. We had quite a bit of failure with those lines. This picture here on the right-hand side happens to be just a small portion of the sand, the sandy loam that entered into the storm sewer sys, I'm sorry, the sanitary sewer system, ended up at our wastewater treatment plant. There's a significant settling of Walmart's parking lot. Fortunately, they were very cooperative, and we began work on that last year. What we're asking this evening is that there's some lines, there are some things that were redone when Walmart came in, and we kind of took a second look at those things. Obviously, we had to maintain and keep sanitary sewer service operational. It wasn't reasonable for that many people, considering the size of the area. And what we're asking for is a vacation of this area in white, and then there's an ask for staff to go and finalize and get the area in green. So basically, the stuff that's in red here has been abandoned, and there are some new mains that now are taking all that flow again south to the wastewater treatment plant. Let's, let's see here. City Commission, just some quick facts. Approved the vacation petition back on 21st of July. We advertised a public hearing on the 29th of July. Utility releases were sent to all utility companies, not just the city of Manhattan Water and Sewer, but also to Kansas Gas, everyone that's a franchisee. They all had no problem with what is being vacated. And tonight, we're conducting the public hearing. And I think that's really about it.
Thank you, Rob.
Yep. Again, two parts to it. Approved the ordinance and authorized city mission, city administration to finalize, and the mayor and city clerk to execute an easement agreement, the new easement's on. So with that, Mayor or Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Need to hold a public hearing?
Okay. Public hearing first, or questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I can take questions now.
Okay. Questions for Rob? Did you have questions, Brenda? No questions? Okay, if this is a public hearing, are there any? any anyone here to speak to this item, to vacate utility easement for Blument Center PUD? Seeing none. Let's see. Do we vote on this?
I will tell you, and I think I'll have Brenda correctly wrong, we did receive one public comment via the website. However, after reading it, I believe they, because folks were allowed on the website to pick which item they want to submit, after reading their comments, I don't believe it's for this item. I believe it's for your mask ordinance.
Okay. We can put it here. No, it wouldn't make sense.
No, I don't think you want me to read it.
No. So there's no, are there any in-person comments? It doesn't look like there are any.
Just to clarify, this is totally easement. You're not going to be digging anything up. This is just a negotiated agreement with Walmart to clear up the legal things.
That's a great summary, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's an as-built easement negotiation.
I like that. That's short.
So public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation, and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby. We approve Ordinance Number 7496, vacating a utility easement located in the Blument Center PUD, and authorize the city administration to finalize, and the mayor and the city clerk to execute, an easement agreement for a new utility easement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Estabrook, second. Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is vacate public utility easement, is it McCracken Circle on Bellhaven Edition, VA 2003. Once again, Rob Bott, Director of Public Works, will be presenting.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Rob Bott, Director of Public Works. This one is a request from a private citizen. The original plan for the subdivision was adopted in 1955. There's two easements along this property. One is a utility easement, and then one is a drainage easement. I just want to make sure everyone knows that the drainage easement will stay in place. There's no change to that. So what we're asking this evening is to vacate a utility easement. The owner of Lot 1, I believe they may have actually submitted or are ready to submit a building permit for remodeling, and they would, they want to widen their driveway, and basically need to construct a retaining wall because of the grade difference between their driveway and kind of where the easement line is in order to widen it. And, you know, we took a look at it. Basically, so this is the plotted drainage easement on the, hopefully, west side. North is up. Give me a north arrow. And what we're asking to vacate this evening is the area that is in yellow. This is basically property here, and drainage easement, I'm sorry, utility easement is somewhere right in here, and they're wishing to widen, and then construct a retaining wall in this area. No utilities are currently located at all in that utility easement. All utility companies have responded to the request to vacate it, and they support the vacation. So with that, the public administration supported and brought it forth to you all for consideration. Basically, unlike the other one, this is just the ordinance, the vacate to utility easement. And with that, Mayor, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Rob? Linda?
The bottom line is, the city is saying, we do not, we will never use this land, and in those situations, the property owner can make that kind of a request.
Correct. There was a sanitary sewer project some time ago in the rear of many of these yards. I don't know if it's specifically behind this home, but I know in the subdivision that we dealt with a number of long-term problems. And so our staff did review it. Randy DeWitt, in Long Term Vision, reviewed it as well. And not just the City of Manhattan, but also Cox Communications, all our franchise, Kansas Gas, Evergy, all those folks also reviewed it and said they have no need for it.
That's good.
Mayor, Commissioners, anything else?
I guess if you haven't needed it in 60, 65 years, you're probably not going to need it next year, I suspect.
Most likely not. That's a good, yes, good point.
And I just want to remind all of us, and I keep forgetting to say our name when we speak. With that said, is there any, this is a public hearing, any public comments or public here to discuss this item? I saw that there were no public comments received via email. Is that right, Brenda? Nothing was received. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Does anyone make a motion on this item?
Mayor, Linda Morris. I move that we find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by the proposed vacation, and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby, and approve Ordinance Number 9497, vacating a utility easement for along the entire eastern boundary of Lot 1, McCracken Circle, Bellhaven Edition.
Second. Hattasol.
Okay. Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. And now we are moving on to our general agenda, to consider the Downtown Manhattan, Inc., DMI Funding and Platform Outdoor Dining Request. Jason Hilders, our Deputy City Manager, along with Gina Scroggs, our Executive Director of DMI, or Downtown Manhattan, Inc., will be presenting this evening. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. Few weeks ago, if not months, Downtown Manhattan, Inc., engaged with Architect One and BHS Construction to look at some platform dining concepts for seven food establishments here in Manhattan, along Points and along Fourth Street. This would provide an option for more dining due to the COVID-19 impacts on capacity that have been imposed on a lot of our food establishments here in Manhattan. The dining itself would occupy 28 to 30 existing, not only parallel stalls, mostly angled stalls along Points Avenue, up to 20 additional seats per eating establishment, as you'll see here shortly in some sketches. And Gina Scroggs with DMI did share these with Julie Gibbs in the Riley County Health Department, so she could take a look at the distancing and the spacing of the tables and chairs as well. As I mentioned, the seven different businesses, mostly along Points Avenue, Bourbon and Baker, Tap House, The Brewing Company, El Patron, Five, The Chef on Fourth Street, and then Finn's Pub. The ones on Points, as I mentioned, are mainly the angled stalls, and it's going to take three to four per business. On Chef, it looks like we can get these platforms in about two of the parallel stalls along Fourth Street. This is the Fourth Street concept. This would be similar to what you'd find out in front of The Chef. You can see there are three tables with four different seating options, so up to a dozen more people could be served at The Chef in its busy time. Also, they're regular hours for folks that would just prefer to be outside. The Points Avenue platforms, you can see in this particular schematic, there are five different four-seat options. So this is where you get up to 20 people within this platform. The platforms themselves, as you can see out here in the street, but they also occupy a little bit of the sidewalk. Basically, where the tree grates end would be basically about the line of the platforms along the sidewalks on Points Avenue. Essentially, the servers would be coming in and out, crossing the sidewalk. On September 1st, you all will also consider allowing alcohol to come across that sidewalk into these platform dining areas. That would take special action by the commission. Right now, it looks like it's in a resolution type of format, so we won't need to adopt an ordinance, but that resolution is going to acknowledge these seven establishments and these platforms as the only areas in which that alcohol can cross that ADA-accessible sidewalk. If we see more opportunities to do that in the future, we can address it either by ordinance or resolution, but what we have in mind right now is a resolution coming back in two weeks to allow that to occur. BHS generated three concepts. The first one was a platform-only of around $153,000. I will state that this is not going to meet the regs that we have in place today. Currently, there needs to be railing around this area. It can't have a free-flow access out to the streets and adjacency. So Option 2 and Option 3 do bring the railing and the composite sides and planters and benches into the mix. The concepts you saw were really Option 3 more predominantly than anything. It had the complete sides on three of the platform, so there's a specific area where the server and the patrons will enter and exit. It provides a safer venue, and again, it meets the current regulations for outdoor dining in our right-of-way. We anticipate a future agreement with the construction company and the architectural firm. This evening, we're looking for that type of direction from the commission. More than likely, we would require both of those firms to enter into our contracts that we normally do for construction. This evening is a little bit of that selection, and via Charter Ordinance 44, you have every right to enter into that type of contract if you desire. The contractor would like the city to evaluate and remove bike racks and planters that may be in conflict. We'll also be asked to reinstall those. These platforms are projected to be in place until it becomes unseasonal to do so. So this could be November or December, with the intent that they could be removed and reinstalled next spring, if we're still dealing with the same circumstances. As soon as the weather breaks and it's an opportunity to eat outside, I think there's a desire to consider that as we move forward. As I mentioned, your resolution for alcohol is going to be temporary. It will more than likely just be for this fall. We would have to come back in the spring if we're going to do this again and reconsider the alcohol. As I mentioned, city construction contracts and design agreements would be per the city regs. It would, in effect, become a city improvement. It would become a city piece of property. We would be asked to store that, and we believe we can do so today. In addition to the platforms, Downtown Manhattan, Inc. has a request to you this evening. You heard this request during the budget time. They were going to be short, around $32,000 to operate through the end of the year. A lot of this is primarily due to transient guest tax being low. As Ron mentioned earlier, we had enough to realize everybody's budgets through mid-year due to COVID-19, and we don't anticipate being able to make all of the third and fourth quarter payments. There's a request for an alternative funding source. City administration identified Capacity and Economic Development Fund. There are obviously other funds, if you'd like us to look other places for this, but the $32,000 request is being made this evening. So action items this evening. First and foremost, if the platforms are something you'd like us to pursue, we're looking for a direction to go ahead and select BHS and Architect One to design and construct these improvements. If agreed upon, there's three amounts. Again, the 153 doesn't necessarily meet our alcohol rules and regs, so if you select that amount, it'll be hard for us to approve the alcohol to meet, to get to these platforms. Option 2 and 3 would meet our regulations. Architect One has an estimate of just over $11,000 to finalize the construction plans. These may be Spark eligible. We talked about it before the meeting and the pre-meeting. This $250,000 to $300,000, we have earmarked. We'll continue to pursue that. It doesn't look like we'll know for sure until mid-September, the 15th, I believe, is the feedback we've received most recently. So it could be a month from now before we know if the Spark funding is eligible. I think there's a lot to be gained in the next 30 days to set up this dining opportunity downtown. If we were asked to wait for the Spark funds, we'd probably be waiting 30 days before we could even get started. BHS has expressed to us, it's going to take four to five weeks just to get materials here and get ramped up. Design's going to have to be finalized. That'll take a few weeks. And code needs to require, engineering needs a review for stormwater, and then we'll need to work with parks to come down and take a look at what planters and bike racks are in the possible conflicts. So we've got a lot of work to do in 30 days, is basically what I'm saying. If we delay it another 30, you're going to be in October before we have this opportunity. And an additional was reacting to the DMI request, the $32,000 out of ED Fund or some other fund. And again, that might be Spark eligible. We're not as confident there as we are with the platforms, but we'll continue to look at that opportunity. Mayor, be happy to answer any questions. I know Gina Scroggs, Director of DMI, is here as well. Architect One and BHS representatives are also here.
Thank you, Jason. I do have questions, but I'm going to open it up for Commissioner questions and comments first, and then we can go forward. Commissioner Morris?
I'd like to just ask, what is the potential completion date? I didn't run across that.
Patrick with BHS may have a better estimate. When we talked to Wayne, it was going to take four, five weeks to even get the materials here. Patrick can probably address that when he comes up to make his comments.
Because I'd be interested in that as relates to the, you know, fall and cold weather, and if it's November, it's a little different. K-State's going to be out at Thanksgiving, so I'm just trying to put things in perspective a bit. I would really like to pursue that Spark eligibility. I think that would be a great solution. I tend to support the 153, no, the $216,000 of the railing. And I say that because then if we added the $34,000 for the DMI, that would put us up to the high end of Option 3, because I am concerned that DMI is here wanting economic development money. I can see that every one of the programs we offer can also, we could predict that they will be coming also to request additional assistance from us. And so I just want to be, I want to be really cautious about what we're committing to. So anyway, just to, but my main concern, I guess, is, are the other businesses in the next door and in the block that will lose, in some cases, four parking places, and they're already stretched pretty thin, so that those parking places that support the neighboring businesses will suffer, and whether they're, whether they have a big storefront or a little storefront. So I'm just trying to make sure we're having balance, especially with the addition of alcohol as you move forward. I am concerned about outdoor alcohol. But just, that's probably for the September 1st meeting.
Yeah, just to speak real quickly, I know Gina will have some reactions for you as far as neighboring businesses and how the entire district views this request. I know she has some feedback for you there. DMI is the only entity that approached us during budget time, knowing they would be short and knowing they made the request. We didn't receive that from any other entity throughout our budgeting process, knowing, and they knew prior to June, that the transient guest tax funds would be low for the third and fourth quarter. So I don't know if we would anticipate a rush or additional applications. I wouldn't rule it out either. So I think your comment has some relevance there, too.
Thank you, Jason.
Every entity is going to be really hurting, whether it's TGT or other budget items. So just to weigh in on that score.
Yep.
Mark?
Commissioner Hattasol here. So how are we going to pay for it upfront if we have to wait for reimbursement? Just kind of raid the general fund or take it out of water temporarily or something?
The Economic Development Fund.
That will come out of there to start with.
Has ample funds today. There's in excess of $8 million sitting there today.
Okay. Secondly, obviously, there's, the stormwater will continue to go underneath the thing, say, without any kind of issues of, people aren't going to be outside if it's raining anyway, so I guess it's not that big a deal if water comes up.
And we don't want one of these floating down Points Avenue. So we're going to do our best to handle that storm drainage. to do our best to handle that storm drainage. Like, and I, you know, it's interesting, I got some pictures from Mark Beisham from Olson showing me these down in Arkansas with no accommodations for stormwater. So, people are doing this across the country. They're trying to help their businesses in their downtowns flourish. These opportunities can bring, if you read some of the letters from Evan and from Katie down at Bourbon and Baker and at Tap House, they can realize quite a bit of a return on a good night utilizing these 20 seats.
What the, the middle cost one, that thing is the number C, which has the nice planters. B just has, what, walls and not the planters and stuff?
Like aluminum railing, like you would have in your backyard on a chain link fence. That's pretty much the way Wayne described it. It would be minimal. This obviously makes a more aesthetically pleasing product, a little bit safer product in terms of just anyone getting in and out, too.
Okay, there's no opportunity to put a couple more tables on the sidewalk because we've got rules and regulations against that probably, right?
Yeah, and we looked at sidewalk dining about every-
I was going to say, in between, in addition to the, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a challenge. The ADA access in our downtown is up against the buildings. The slope on the sidewalks from the curb back to about halfway through the sidewalk, it doesn't meet ADA, so it's hard to put people out there on a slope, and that's really why we have platforms in the mix. The crown of the street meets the crown of the slope to give us our curb and gutter, and it's very difficult to put seating on that crown and meet ADA.
Okay. So, yeah, I think it's a fabulous idea, and if we're going to go to the trouble of building the darn things, we should trot those babies out every spring, take them down every fall until they become worthless. And so, we need to, and I think the Aggieville people, we need to see what we can do to allow people to spread out outside in Aggieville, too, in a similar way, and obviously, we don't need platforms and stuff to do that, but we do need to try to, if we're concerned about people being in the bars in Aggieville, well, we need to get them in the outside of Aggieville somehow doing something, and I suspect somebody's thinking about how to do that. I just haven't heard how that's going to happen yet. But, yeah, I think if we're going to spend a quarter million bucks on this, let's do this on a regular, ongoing basis and permanently change our years, yeah, put a five-year sunset or something so we don't have to trot this thing back out every spring, decide if we're going to do it again. Let's just do it, get it done, and then just keep doing it.
And we'll have relationships once we consider the alcohol, because you're both going there, and you're right to. We'll have to have relationships with each of those businesses to have that alcohol cross that sidewalk and enter into our parking stall area and be consumed. When we get into the discussion about Aggieville and some of these concepts which have been floated more recently, there's a higher risk and a higher responsibility, and we've talked a little bit about that common consumption area. We can talk more at September 1, but I just want to make, it's a clear distinction between these platforms, because these platforms will be the responsibility of that business. You start bringing open container, open areas into streets and sidewalks, you only have a few options, and one of them's a big risk to the city, the other's going to be a big risk to whoever's signing off on it. And it can be done. Other communities are doing. I'm not saying it's not, but you just got to understand the risk going in.
I just want to clarify one of Commissioner Hattasol's comments. So, yeah, if we could move forward with this, it doesn't mean we're going to redo it. It would be stored somewhere, right?
Yeah, we're not going to leave it out there in December, January, February.
It's not 216 each time.
No, no, no.
It's one cost, and that's it.
Yes.
Right.
Still a quarter of a million dollars or $215,000 to get it done.
Okay. I haven't heard from Commissioner Buckler.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I think, you know, this is a great idea. It shows some innovation. I think, you know, DMI took the lead on that, which is why we should give them their $32,000, because they went out and were very proactive, and of course, the coronavirus situation has caused those restaurants to really have to constrain operations, bad for the economy, and this is one of those positive things that has been lacking. You know, we're busy, you know, focusing on enforcement and not trying to make things better for the businesses, and I think this does it, and we have the economic development money, and we've all talked over the years of why can't we target it to local business? Well, this does exactly that. So, I think it's a worthwhile shot. They can be dismantled and stored, perhaps reused in the future, and I think it's going to make a difference in two areas. One, the revenue for those businesses and the revenue for the city, because we'll get taxes, but it's also going to help the health situation, because it's going to put people outside and assist with item three on the, you know, mitigation efforts, which is social distancing. So, I'm 100% for it.
I think, I'm going to let Gina speak to this as well. I was happy to see all the letters. I think one of the things we did maybe a month or two ago was to move forward with outdoor dining, and we had some challenges with picnic tables and such, and, you know, it was a good idea, but it was harder to implement. So, I think this is something that makes it more plausible to have in front of the restaurants. I would like to move forward with it as well with the railings, because I do think safety is an issue. There is construction going on there, so I don't know how all of that works, or how long that might take, or if there's an impact at all. As far as the Eco Diva funds for the $35,000, $34,000, I believe if we approved to give it to DMI, we should give it to all of those other groups, because there was like five of them, I think, if I remember. And each of them, even Aggieville is one of them as well. These are all businesses. These are all, you know, economic drive, and I think even though there's grant money and round two and round three and all of these things, it still helps our community move forward. This is one of those things you would see like in Colorado and all of those areas. We've heard so much about outdoor dining, and I think this is something we need to move forward with, and then it falls on the city, I would think, to take care of it. Where do they store it? And once they have to remove it, where does it go? Do we have storage space for all of that?
Yeah, I talked to Eddie a little bit today, Eddie Eastus, our Parking Reg Director, and we did move some equipment and some different things out in 2018 due to the flood, or what, yeah, 2018 or 2019, what was it, 2018? Yeah. Anyway, so we do have some storage space that we moved some things out of and never returned back into these sheds. We're going to need to get our park staff down with BHS, look at the construction, make sure it's in a way that we can disassemble and reassemble in a way. We can haul these things, so they have to be of a certain size. We'll need to look at the indoor storage capacity, make sure the size of what it is we're storing can fit. So, there's some coordination that we'll need to do, but just in brief conversations, we feel like we have some potential for some indoor storage.
Who takes care of the maintenance? If something should break or crack or whatever it is, is that on us or is that on DMI?
And again, these will be ours. So, we, yes, we are contracting for this construction. They will be our improvement. We will then be responsible for the upkeep.
If another organization wants to use these, can they, or if another business, would they be, can they be retrofit to other ones?
Architect One can comment here, but I think they're designed for this particular street area, so each site will get its own design based on the slopes, based on the distances between obstacles. So, Emily may be able to elaborate on that a little bit, but they possibly could be mayor, but we would have to look at that construction and see how well it would fit somewhere else.
And just tell me a little bit about the alcohol one, like you said, we approved for outdoor alcohol. I don't quite remember exactly the parameters to that.
So, we haven't approved really a whole lot different. All we did was allowed the server to come out the door-
Right.
-step into an open sidewalk and then make their way into sidewalk dining that's adjacent to the building. So, the only concept I can think of is like Redena's down in Aggieville has a rail with some tables and chairs in it. What we did would allow that server to come out that door, step onto the sidewalk, and then enter into that enclosed area. The difference that I'm speaking to with these platforms, the server has to step onto the sidewalk and cross the ADA access. That is where we have been tripped up for years with ABC and the state of Kansas. Well, they've recently allowed some things to be planned for in Lawrence that now we feel like we can also plan for and implement here in Manhattan. We never really had the area for a business to have five feet clear into an area that then alcohol could be served. That five feet of ADA access has to be maintained. So, with this platform, we actually create an environment where that can occur. On 12th Street, what we're constructing right now will have to pass something similar, because we will have created the environment where someone can do outdoor dining, but that server will have to cross that five-foot ADA passage in order to do so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Jason. Gina, would you like to speak to this?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, yeah, Aaron, sorry.
Oh, sorry. The, for this concept, it clearly hasn't gone through, like, in front of any of the planning people, planning board, Jason, or anything like that, right? I'm wondering about if it impacts any of the bike ped planning, the bike routes, the e-scooters downtown, that kind of thing. It's not a, you know, big deal. I just think it should be discussed with those different people. The character of downtown seems more preserved with the third option, right? And the question I have maybe for Gina on, of course, the alcohol, if you're going to do this, you should be able to serve the alcohol. So, it'd be option two or three in my mind, Jason. The leaning towards the third, the, these platforms, I guess maybe this is for Jason, not Gina. The, like, the CVB wants to do winter time, like a village type of, if we get past, if things are open, they want to have opportunities to have kind of shopping in little settings, but they haven't been able to navigate that parking either around Blue Earth Plaza or other places. This could be, this platform could be fitted in a way that could be used in other places if we owned it, or is this the only purpose that it could be used for?
As of now, it's the only purpose it's been designed for. So, if there are other purposes, are you speaking to the CVB and Karen Hibbard and some opportunities?
Well, Marcia Rozell, at one point, you know, I talked about, you know, these cabins, and they have the village that you come in and you do the shopping, and Germany does this, and we could do that with Commissioner Butler dressed up as the Grinch or whatever, and we'd have, we'd win winter time, right?
Yes.
But we've ran into the parking issue, so I was just wondering if there might be overlap there.
Yeah, and Eddie and Marcia have had conversations in the past, kind of some warming huts, some areas for people to gather, keep warm during those months. Obviously, these won't be enclosed, but those types of concepts could be explored. Whether these could be retrofitted to allow for something like that, we could explore that, Aaron. It just hasn't been done to this point yet.
Cool.
On the bike ped, bicycles aren't allowed on our sidewalks in downtown, so they are encouraged or required to be out in the street, so these wouldn't impact necessarily the bike flow, and obviously, the ADA clearance would be there as well for pedestrians.
That's good. Linda?
Just to say that, my question is, would other businesses be able to use the platform when this particular restaurant is not open? What is the use? Will it be cordoned off and nobody can use it, or like in the mornings before 11 o'clock when the restaurant opens, would, could they be used for something else?
I imagine they could. The only thing that I know of that would be restricted would be the alcohol use, because the alcohol would be tied to the business.
Yeah.
But otherwise, if you grabbed a cup of coffee and just wanted to sit out on a platform, you know, it's not, it'll be the city's property, so it's a matter of allowing, I would imagine that would be an allowable use, absolutely.
I'm thinking of building a business or two next door-
Yep.
-that could have a sale from eight to 11, or eight to 10:30 before the business were to open, and so that, because really, we're giving these restaurants a gift that we aren't bestowing on the rest of the downtown, the individuals in the down, the individual stores in the downtown area. So, I'm just trying to level some of this out so that there are more beneficiaries than, because otherwise, this will be used till, I don't know, 11 at night?
Yeah, and I don't want to steal Gina's thunder, because she has some feedback from those businesses that I think she's ready to share with you.
Okay, good. That'd be great. We need that input, for sure.
Gina, come on up.
Because we're using our imaginations.
Gina Scroggs, Executive Director of Downtown Manhattan. Thank you for your time. Really quick, before we get into all of this fun stuff, I do want to just make this plea of urgency on considering our 2020, the remainder of our 2020 contract. I talked to you about this back in June during our funding request. I'm pretty scared. As of September 30th, it's lights out for DMI. We don't have any funding past September 30th. So, like, this September 30th. Just really need for some decisions to be made for you guys to give me some direction and some guidance on that, because I am losing sleep now at this point. Okay, I tried to write down everybody's questions, but if you don't mind, if I could just keep to my original script and we'll get, I promise we'll get to it. I really view these platforms in no other way except economic recovery for the entire downtown, and there is a lot of global, worldwide data that supports outdoor dining platforms or outdoor dining in general as being very, very good for downtown districts as a whole. It doesn't just serve the restaurants. It serves, we are creatures of socialization and habit, and we all like to eat, most of us, and we also, in our downtown district, our people like to come and stay, and they like to hang out and shop, and hopefully, eventually, soon, they'll be able to do other things besides dining and shopping, like going to Man Hatchet or our escape room called Locked, or the movie theaters, where they will continue to spend more money. But platforms have been proven in just a short amount of time. In Italy and France, where they're ahead of us a little bit on the COVID curve, they're starting to see economic recovery in those areas. Really, before I get into answering your questions, I want to express my gratitude, especially to Jason. He hates this when I do this, but I got to do it. He is my forehead-slapping, very patient mentor and a counselor to DMI. We've been guided over the years by him, and I would not be here tonight with this amazing opportunity if ultimately it weren't for Jason. Also, Emily Peenig from Architect One, I called her. She jumped in with both feet and all of her huge heart, and under a very, very tight timeline, and just agreed to support and be our partner in this recovery effort, and I think that speaks volumes of the types of businesses that are downtown. I was just telling Emily tonight that I've done so much research and talked to so many cities across the United States, and I met this woman, and we've become friends from Philadelphia, and I sent her these images, and she said, "My God, those are some of the most beautiful images. They're beautiful. They're beautiful platforms. Should use them always." So, kudos to Emily. Also, Wayne Sloan and Patrick Shutter and the team at BHS for their obvious commitment to downtown and for their work that will result in the construction of safe and durable platforms for all patrons to enjoy. Thank you so much. Without the support of these three people, like I said, we would not be here tonight, and we would not have this proactive, solid plan for getting down the path of recovery in downtown and in the community. This is an absolutely tangible economic recovery effort. This helps everybody. When we lost restaurants, restaurants are a huge driver in all communities. Restaurants are a huge driver in downtown. When we lost Harry's, we lost an anchor. We lost the lighthouse. We lost, we lost a lot. Thousands, literally thousands of people took notice. Thousands, literally thousands of people took notice when that happened, and we sat up and we said, "Oh, my God. Harry's? How's this happen?" I... We're too late to save Harry's, but we are not too late to save other restaurants and the retail shops around, in and around downtown, and the entertainment venues in and around downtown that can be supported by these platforms. Think about pre-COVID, when you would come down to Third Thursday, or you would just come downtown to go to dinner, get a glass of wine at Harry's, or whatever you were doing. How many times did you look in a window or step into a shop or just spend more time? And so I just... I really want to impress upon you the value, the economic value of these platforms in helping all of our businesses. So, Wynne actually stole my thunder earlier, when he was talking about why these are so important. And there's actually four really quantifiable reasons that these platforms are important. And one is that they absolutely drive revenue. Two is they will increase sales tax. Three, they provide a safe alternative to going into a restaurant. And four, they're going to bring locals and visitors downtown. And those people are going to sit around, and they're going to eat, and they're going to drink and have a glass of wine, and they're going to shop and spend money. These seven outdoor dining platforms can increase revenue in our core downtown area on average of $21,000 per week, and that is just a conservative estimate. So conservative. At last, and a little bit of quantifiable information, I think, Linda, you had asked me about, in early June, I had surveyed all of our businesses, not just our restaurants, but all of our businesses, and I had asked them, "What do you think about this? How do you feel about this? How do you feel about losing parking? Do you want to close Points Avenue down? Do you want it to just be one closed area? Do you want this dining on the sidewalk?" Like, what... What do you want to make recovery possible and be safe? And platforms was the ultimate answer. But they had to be pretty. They couldn't be thrown together. I think one term that somebody used was, they didn't want it to look like a sidewalk sale every day. They didn't want it to look like we threw it together for the weekend. They want it to be a piece of our beautiful downtown. So I think that that's important, especially when they're willing to give up parking. Most businesses don't want to lose parking spaces, but it is a parking perception problem that we have. We have a mall. We have city parking lots. We have areas where people can park and walk to locations. We spent $200 million building a walkable district. That's what we are. So even though it hurts a little bit to lose those 30 spaces or so, everybody, most everybody, not everybody, but most, very clear majority, 90%, is in favor of losing those spaces to The scooter question that you asked, Aaron, I have walked and talked and been in really close contact with the scooter guys, with Edmund and with Jared, and it's very informative for me to be able to... I'm a visual person, and I was so happy when they came to see me, and we got to spend four hours outside. We... I had talked to them about these platforms, and two of them were in what they would have considered ideal scooter parking hubs. And we just found two other ideal parking hubs. So it's not in any way restricting bike or scooter anything. In fact, we feel like we improved upon parking hub options, so that problem was solved. What were some of the other questions? I was... Oh, yeah. All along, through all these crazy things, I've been talking to Julie at the Health Department and... Because I didn't want to get... We take public safety downtown very seriously. And I didn't want to propose anything that was going to be outside of an order or an ordinance or a mandate. I wanted it to be something that everybody could embrace and really love. And so all along, I've sort of just been sharing these ideas with her, and she ultimately said, you know, "These are great. We've got the six feet of social distancing. There's nothing you can stand at or that resembles a bar. There is no waiting, just like there's no waiting in a restaurant." I think it addresses... We treat these exactly the same way as we would treat, as our restaurants now treat patrons inside their business. There's still no waiting inside this area. Still have to be six feet apart. Still have to have your mask on until you're at your table. All of those things still apply. And it was great to get her blessing on that. On... Somebody mentioned something about the use, secondary use to this. The only concern that I have is that our restaurants are supplying all of the tables and chairs, umbrellas, plants, lighting, heater, propane heaters, and we would need to have some way of making sure that all of those things were taken care of. And I don't know how to really address that, but...
As I mentioned, we'll have individual agreements with the businesses. There may be something we can work out with the business to allow other activity.
Does anybody want to hear from Emily or from Pat? Do you have any questions for me?
I do have a question for you. You talked about planters and such. Who takes care of the planters now? Are they under contract with DMI?
The planters, in this scenario right here, and everything that would live on those platforms, would be the responsibility of the restaurant.
Of the restaurant.
All of it.
So if somebody's walking by and they just wanted to rest for a little bit, this would not be the place for them?
Well, I don't... I don't want to say that. I mean, we have... I don't know. I mean, legally, I don't know the answer to that, but I certainly can't imagine just... I mean, if it was restaurant time, the restaurant would want to be able to have that seat to make money.
Right. Would they have a sign that says something or something like that?
We do... We do have to have some signage that explains all of the safety
Yeah.
issues and how it's to be used. But like you... Somebody was saying about getting the coffee in the morning. I mean, now, right now, we have lots and lots of people that walk early in the morning before they go into the mall, and they sit on our park benches. So our bench is along Points Avenue. So I can imagine it being fine to do something like that. I would like to say, though, in many, many conversations with my restaurants, they are inclined to want to do just like Wade and Annette Redina do, and that is to lock, chain. They would stack all their chairs every single night, clean up the area, chain everything together, chain the tables. So I don't know, if nobody's there from the restaurant at 8:00 at night, honestly, I don't know how it would be
Right.
used.
You might need... I was just wondering, because that is a high-traffic area, and if somebody has coffee or ice cream or something, but it's not related to the restaurant, and they just... Like, if you're in the mall and you see Mrs. Powell's and you see all these people just sitting? Like, if somebody just came and just...
Yeah.
Would there be restrictions, like this is restaurant time or lunchtime or whatever it might be?
I think as long as there... I mean, I don't have any problems. I can't imagine a single restaurant owner of mine would have a problem with this, but as long as it wasn't a revenue-generating time.
Yeah.
I cannot imagine why anybody would mind that.
That's the only thing I'm thinking of. If you're going to use EcoDevo funds and make it okay for anybody else to use it. But other than that, I don't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else does. Okay. Is there... Are there any public comments?
Before we get to the public, Mayor, I think Patrick can address construction time that was asked earlier. If we give Patrick an opportunity.
Okay. Come on up, Patrick.
Hello, Commissioners and Mayor. Patrick Shutter, BHS Construction. We would anticipate four to six weeks of construction time. Hopefully, we could get materials in and start getting materials in, start building things off-site, and then bring things onsite. I might also address one question on the Christmas Village that Aaron Estbrook brought up. These might be able to be used in conjunction with that. Marcia and I have been discussing what that might look like, but that would be something that would be good to explore, because the timing of when these might go away would be when those would be showing up down at Blue Earth Plaza. So it could be something good with timing for the city, but we're really excited about this. I'm with Mark. I think these should just live down on Points. Any other questions?
I was curious what the flooring is made out of. Is it a composite or...
Yeah, so the design that Architect One put together has got good materials, so it's a composite material, and truthfully, with the materials that are being used, it deserves to stay down there for a while, or it would last for a long time.
So you're saying they're pretty durable?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
They'll be well-built.
All right. We're not going to have major costs, maintenance cost, year two or year three, this is going to be good for a while, anyway.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We want downtown to look good.
We're paying a lot more attention to maintenance, the high costs of maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Commissioner comments? I just want to say, I think this is something you probably already had us moving forward with, because these are concepts that we've been wanting to see for outdoor, and we didn't know how to quite do it. So I don't think you're going to not see support for that. My thoughts on the EcoDevo funds for the gap of the $34,000 is, if we do it for DMI, I'd rather just do it for all of the other four or five that we didn't. Just because they didn't ask doesn't mean somehow we're only going to show preference to those that asked, because they probably assumed if the decision was made by the City Commission, they just accepted it as a decision made. And I think whether it's Aggieville or any of the other businesses that were on that, and if we have the funds for it, I'd rather see it being utilized that way.
Just to give you an idea, annually, for those four different firms, the DMI, ABA, Manhattan Arts Center, and the Wolf House, it's $186,000. 93 of that has been dispersed. So you've got 93 left over, and those are the four entities that would be left short if we didn't disburse those funds. So if ED is going to make up that gap, $93,000 is the gap.
Right. And that's what I was thinking.
Yep.
I would just add, City Manager Ron Fear, that we do think that all four of these nonprofit entities would be eligible for the Spark Funds, and we would recommend, plan on touching base with them, that they seek... The Manhattan Community Foundation is planning on administering the $500,000 allocated to them for nonprofits for operational assistance. And so, as I mentioned earlier, these entities would not qualify for the state rounds that are coming up, where maybe some others would, because to meet the state requirements, they have to show the loss in the first, in this period, where their loss is going to be in the second half of the year because of the lack of TGT funds. So I do think there's a good opportunity. I don't know how many other nonprofits are going to be applying for those funds. That's really going to be the question, but it might be able to partially offset some of those needs. From the construction standpoint, I do think there's a strong case for how Spark Funds could be used to help with the construction.
So would they be eligible for Spark Funds if it's... Even though it's the second part of that, if it's documented? Because I heard that it wasn't... It cannot be revenue-based.
So on the... Yes, so the nonprofit and business are being treated the same, that they can be used to offset lost revenue.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yep. And there's more flexibility locally than there would be with the state funds.
So are you applying for those funds? I'm sorry, Gina, so are you applying for the Spark Funds for the... Or are you not eligible?
We're not eligible for this round for the reason of... Just mentioned about the timeline.
So she's not eligible for the state funds?
Yeah.
But the county funds that are going to the foundation to administer locally...
So she's eligible for that, okay.
She should be, and the funds that were... The entities that we fund through TGT should be eligible. And so, all that's new, still a lot of questions with that. Foundation hasn't even been formally contacted on all the rules, so it's one of those things that certainly is a possibility.
There's a path forward.
And we would encourage them. We would encourage all our nonprofits to apply for that, that receive city funds.
But part of the problem is, is the timing.
Right.
You've got to have the money October 1, not December 1st or sometime later.
We can't go past September 30.
Yeah.
So we could approve the EcoDevo funds, but if they were successful in achieving those, they could reimburse us.
Is that just for DMI, or is that the same process for, like, Aggieville?
Well, if they came and asked for it, that would be a potential aspect. They will.
Yeah, that's going to happen. So any other public comments on this issue, on this project?
Yes. Kevin West, 321 North 16th. I signed in outside. My wife and I own a retail business downtown, and I appreciated Commissioner Morse's comments on the neighboring businesses and their effect. I like the idea of outdoor dining. I am concerned about losing five parking spaces on the part of a block that only has eight between the Waram and Fourth Street. We've got the disadvantage of being a second-floor retail, and when I looked at the plan that would affect our building, all the parking spots down in our area get taken out. So I'd at least ask consideration to consult with the other businesses down there, maybe look at an option that reduces the size in certain areas. But the bottom line, if that goes... If the plan that's laid out here goes in, I've got no parking in front. I'm already on the second floor, and this is potentially one more thing that turns downtown maybe into solely a dining district and makes it harder for other retail. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on this project, public comments? Commissioner comments?
I think that Erin raised an interesting point. I think this is something that ought to go to the Planning Board. I've noticed we've been bypassing them with some city proposals, and that it seems to me that they're a part of our process. And anyway, I am eager to try something like this. I was on the Chamber of Commerce trip to Lincoln, Nebraska, and I was really impressed with their innovation, their different things they're doing, their fixing up an alley and doing twinkling lights in it, and it's just a very inviting place for people. And so this is the first opportunity we've had to do something new and interesting and certainly would draw more people. It's kind of disappointing, there are only three tables, but that's 12 people. And so however, you can make it work. I am an advocate for improving our business capacity by using space that is previously not used. I do worry about parking for the other businesses that aren't benefiting from the restaurant business specifically, whatever they may be, a florist, a jeweler, you know, a gallery, anyway. So that's a concern. So I would like for you to be as conservative as you can with the number of parking places you use, and I know we can't cut down on the ADA or handicapped spaces, but... And I for sure don't want to build a building to store these in. So I hope we have an existing building somewhere for them. So that would hopefully be kind of a deal breaker. So generally, I'm supportive of this.
Commissioner Hattasaw here. I can... Kevin, I see your point there. If they could... It'd be nice to have that dining exactly outside your front door, but if they moved the MHK Brewing things... if they moved the MHK Brewing things another 30 feet to the west, that would free up at least two more spots, it looks like. And I don't know what the architect and Gina, you guys have talked about on that, but it, that looks like that would, you could probably salvage at least two more spots if the thing is drawn to scale here, it looks like, I would guess it would be. So just ponder that a little bit, talk to the people and maybe you could still, it's not quite as ideal as being right out the front door, but if it's 15 feet one way to save a couple parking spots, you might try to consider that.
I should have said again that I support option number two with the DMI. If we weren't supporting DMI with this, then I would support the 242,000, the option three, which is more expensive.
Right. I think I'm supportive of option two as well. Here it says not to exceed 250, so that would be under 216. You know, we often, in the past, we've talked about a parking garage in downtown in that area where A-Daze is, so that might come up again, but right now it seems like it depends on what we want and now we're saying we have enough parking. And it's always been a parking convenience and I think that's what we've discussed in the past. I do understand the parking needs that you are talking about and I think, I mean, we can take one of them out and just have the three, but I think hopefully it generates enough revenue and people that are eating probably would hopefully want to come and visit the art gallery as well and promote it together as an option also. But I do see, like I said, in the future, another parking garage probably coming over there sometime. If we do the 32,000, I do feel we need to open it up to the other business district as well. I'm pretty sure that request is going to come, I have no doubt. And if it's reimbursed or if that's made up with the Spark Money, then I would like for it to come back. I don't know if that's a provision we can put in there or not to replenish the EcoDivo funds. I hope that made sense. Any other conversation?
Just that if you're successful with the Spark Money from the option three.
This is Commissioner Butler. I'd like to go ahead and call the question and make the motion that we authorize the selection of Architect One of Manhattan, Kansas, and BHS Construction of Manhattan, Kansas to design and construct the dining platforms in downtown in an amount not to exceed $250,000 and authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute any agreements and/or contracts necessary to facilitate this construction and approve the DMI funding request of $32,000 to operate for the remainder of 2020.
Commissioner Hattasol, second.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebro?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, it's about nine o'clock. Should we move forward? Do you need a five-minute break? Fly on through, okay, we're going to fly on through is what I hear. General item B, consider extending requirements for using masks or other face coverings in certain circumstances in the city of Manhattan beyond the current ending date of September 7th, 2020. Our presenter this evening is Katie Jackson, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Katie Jackson, city attorney. I have the presentation and I want to, I'll just make sure that, I'm going to share my screen here, make sure everyone can see it. Are you able to see the presentation?
Yes, it's good.
Okay, very good. I can actually make this.
We're seeing the notes on the side?
Yes, then, okay. Is that better?
That's better.
That's better, thank you.
Okay. We're here tonight to discuss the face covering and mask ordinance. As background, I wanted to go over the timeline. The dates are on the slide, of course, but on July 2nd, the Governor of Kansas issued an executive order, this was 20-52, that required face masks. The order was to become effective on July 3rd. The counties have an option to override this type of governor's order. And just to let the members of the public know, the Manhattan city limits are located in two counties, in both counties, Potawatomi County and Riley County. I have a typo on July 6th, but they opted out of the governor's executive order. Riley County did not adopt it, opted out of the governor's executive order. On July 7th, the City Commission by majority vote adopted a city ordinance requiring face masks. This ordinance was modeled closely after the governor's order. The city ordinance is a law that requires the masks in certain circumstances, excuse me, certain circumstances. Just as note, it does only apply within the city limits. It does not apply in Riley or Potawatomi County outside of the city of Manhattan limits. By the terms of this ordinance, it is set to expire on September 7th at 11:59 PM unless the commission extends it. As additional background, we've had quite a few developments in Kansas since our ordinance was adopted on July 7th. I have here the information from the Kansas Chamber regarding the impact of the governor's order throughout the state. The counties adopting the governor's order are listed there and these are counties that would have essentially the same mask requirements as the city of Manhattan ordinance because our ordinance was modeled after the governor's order. Two, three other counties adopted or had already adopted their own mask order with similar requirements and those are listed. And then finally, I have a list of the cities that adopted mask ordinances. These cities have also used the governor's order as guidance for their ordinances. This means that the majority of the Kansas population is subject to a mask requirement. And just as a note, our city ordinance is very similar to the requirements that apply throughout the other areas of Kansas that have a mask requirement. As general background, we did adopt the city ordinance as an exercise of constitutional home rule authority. In prior meetings, I noted that the case law throughout the nation generally upholds mask laws, but of course, it always depends upon what the law says and the individual state laws. After Wichita adopted its mask ordinance on July 7th, the Kansas Attorney General was asked to provide an opinion on whether masks had this authority, excuse me, cities had this authority to adopt mask ordinances. The Kansas AG said that the mask ordinances are constitutional, that the cities, there's no action of the legislature that would prohibit a city from adopting, from not adopting a mask ordinance. Again, our ordinance was modeled after the governor's order, so we are consistent with the approach throughout a lot of the state. What our ordinance did was it created new city code sections in our city code book and created a municipal infraction for violation. I'm going to briefly show you the city code sections. I want to note that these city code provisions, these are just summaries that I'm showing on the slides. I encourage anyone who's interested in the specific wording to visit the city's website for the ordinance text or the city code book. These provisions I'm going to discuss have been adopted and the staff worked with the RCPD to develop an FAQ that's located on the RCPD website. We have a link to it from the city website, so there's some additional resources for the public. The city code section 2270, it defines a mask or other face covering, is a covering of the nose and the mouth that is secured to the head with ties, straps, or loops over the ears or simply wrapped around the lower face. It's generally required to wear a face covering in public spaces, which are defined as summarized there. City code section 22-71 is an obligation on when individuals must wear masks and you can see the circumstances here, in very general terms, anytime you're inside an indoor public space or in line to enter one, it's required, and outdoors and public spaces if you're unable to maintain six feet of social distance. Again, I'd refer people to the website and the RCPD site for specific information. Section 22-71 also contains the requirements for business and organizations to require their employees to wear masks in certain circumstances and to require customers, members, visitors, or the public to wear masks inside the business or organization's facility. The city code contains the 10 exemptions that are all, with one minor change, are all identical to the governor's order. Again, this is a summary. I have five of them listed here and then the balance of them are listed on this slide. If anyone has questions about the individual city code sections, I can certainly answer that at the end of the presentation. We have discussed them in the past, so I'm just providing an overview summary now. I wanted to let you know that the ordinance has the fines that are set up in it, the commission gave guidance to have a fine that would increase a little bit with each conviction. It goes from five to 10 to $20. Those fines apply whether it's the individual who violated the ordinance or whether it's a business who violated the ordinance. The charter ordinance currently requires us to assess court costs on these fines, so obviously the total amount that a defendant would pay if they are convicted would be more than $100. It's worth noting that the fine plus $74.50 of the court costs can be worked off through community service. The reason the full amount of the court costs cannot be worked off is that's the portion that we send to the state of Kansas and we are required to send them cash and we're unable to provide community service for that, their portion. There is no jail time included as a penalty for this offense. City code section 22-73 states that this ordinance will sunset on September 7th at 11:59 PM. Our ordinances are typically effective until the commission acts to repeal or amend, but we certainly can do a sunset provision, which we did with the first adoption of this ordinance. The ordinance before you today contains a proposed sunset provision of 11:59 on December 31st. This is a placeholder based upon feedback that I received, but of course, that date can be changed by the commission if the commission desires to move forward with the extension. As a note from what you've received in your packet and what the public can view on the city's website, if we're only changing the sunset date of the ordinance, then we only need to amend this section 22-73. That's why the draft ordinance in your packet only amends this section. The other sections I just discussed, those remain unchanged and so they're in full force and effect. From an enforcement perspective, we do have Riley County Police Department representatives tonight to answer those questions for you. Just as a note of information, the city ordinances are investigated and enforced by our law enforcement partners from Riley County and Kansas State University. They can also investigate and pursue related violations such as trespass, disorderly conduct, or other issues that might arise. As of, when I drafted the agenda memo, there were no citations issued, but since, as of yesterday, we have had two citations issued to businesses for failing to comply with the mask ordinance. They have not appeared in court, so I don't have any update on that, on those cases. Again, I would like to note that the RCPD can speak to the enforcement questions and their experiences and I'd also like to note that we appreciate that the RCPD did work with the city legal staff as a team to finalize the FAQs, to speak with officers about any questions and those things, so we've worked with them to make sure that we all had a good understanding of what the ordinance required. Tonight, you have before you the first reading of an ordinance to extend the sunset date. The current draft shows December 31st of 2020. Of course, you can change that if that's not the date that you like. As I mentioned before, you're only seeing a change to the section 22-73 because that's, the others will remain in full force and effect. If the ordinance is adopted tonight, we have second reading scheduled for September 1st. The publication, if the ordinance passes, would occur before September 7th, which means there would not be a gap of time when the ordinance is in effect. And with that, I can stand for any questions that you might have for the city attorney's office and then again, if you have any questions for the Riley County Police Department, they are also available.
Thank you, Katie. Once we're just revisiting to renew it and if there are no other changes, she would only change the date to December 31st, I think. If there are other changes we want to make, we can have that discussion. We were, we, you know, originally thought about it in May and we didn't do it in May, but then our numbers have changed. The Riley County Commissioners decided not to move forward or they opted out and therefore we took it on ourselves along with Kansas State University, recognizing that at that time, Kansas State University and Fort Riley had already are requiring masks, kind of like what we have in our ordinance. And then we approved it with a 3-2 vote and tonight we have 68 comments, but I'll open it up for Commissioner comments and questions at this time.
This is Commissioner Butler. I did want to ask Katie a couple of questions if possible. I guess she's still on there?
She is.
She's not on the video anymore?
I'm right here.
But my questions are this, you know, you made a great case on, you know, the fact that our ordinance is modeled after the mandate and that other cities and counties have gone along with it. And I don't have a problem with wearing masks, that's not my issue, but the enforcement is wildly different across that spectrum and that hasn't been addressed because there is the difference between what people would call it a traffic ticket enforcement, which is close to what we do in Manhattan. Some people have said, well, that's a violation of the law and it's criminal and the county mandates would be civil. And could you explain that difference because that seems to be an issue?
Well, I don't, so the cities that I listed that have adopted the ordinances have the same enforcement mechanism and process as Manhattan. So they would require their police departments to issue a citation and that they would have to be prosecuted in their municipal court. So the cities, the cities listed all have the same enforcement path, so just to let everyone know that. From the county perspective, I haven't looked at all of their individual orders. There are two ways, so I can't speak to exactly how each county did it, but there are two ways for the county to enforce an order. And one way is the civil process that you've described. So if there's civil process when the violation arises, then they have to have the county attorney file a complaint and under that process, they can be assessed a fine, a civil penalty up to $2,500. There's also a process, depending on how they've written their order, where they can get enforcement and there's actually a fine and it only is up to $100. So I do know, I looked at Shawnee Counties, their ordinance, let's see, their text is a little different, but they, I can speak to theirs because I read theirs, they did do the civil enforcement process, which means that somebody could be subject to the penalty, the civil penalty up to $2,500. But of course, that enforcement mechanism wouldn't involve a police officer in the same way it does when you write a citation. Again, the only mechanism cities have is to have their police forces write a citation and to prosecute it in the municipal court, which is why that's what the cities are doing. But you're correct that the counties have a different process.
Okay, then the other question is, you know, the city annexed Kansas State, so I guess RCPD can write tickets on Kansas State University property for non-mask use?
Yes, so as background, the city has an annexation agreement with Kansas State University, so not all of our city ordinances apply on the university property. Our criminal ordinances do apply and so we can, so and this is considered a criminal ordinance, it's in our offense chapter, so it does apply on Kansas State University. I'll let the PD, the RCPD speak to their, they, the K-State Police Department responds to most issues on Kansas State University property and I would rather have the Riley County Police Department respond to your question because they have an MOU between them about how they respond to calls on their property that the city's not a party to. So I think they would be, I think they would probably be able to address that better as to how the RCPD is handling issues on K-State property.
Okay, and the reason I asked the question, I had some communication with the Kansas State University on enforcement and they relate to me that their enforcement process is really closer to the civil mechanism that you talked about. What happens is the student discipline system is used or the HR system. And that troubled me because we're doing a lot of this because of Kansas State University, yet it appears that KSU Police Department is not issuing citations and I believe they can. So the students are being treated differently on campus than they are off-campus and citizens in the city are therefore also being treated differently. And I've gotten some communications on that and that's part of the things that I think irritate people. It's really the enforcement process. It's not the, no one's going to argue that masks aren't somewhat effective. going to argue that masks aren't somewhat effective. I'm not going down that route at all. The confusion is the disparity in enforcement. Personally, I just assumed the county went with Julia Gibbs and did a mandate, especially since it spread over into some of the other school districts in the county this week.
Actually, Commissioner, if I can make one note about K-State, they have two separate processes. The K-State Police Department can enforce our ordinance, write a citation that gets prosecuted in municipal court. Their process involving student and faculty is their process as an organization. So as an employee of the city of Manhattan, if I violate the mask ordinance in this building, I can either, I could be cited under the mask ordinance and prosecuted. I could also have an employee discipline against me. That's what K-State has. So that, I don't, K-State has the same ability to take an action against this employee or its student that any other organization would if they violate your, basically what I'm going to call your organizational policies. So I just want to clarify that. But K-State PD, their enforcement of it is the same as the RCPD's throughout the community. What choice K-State's making is different, and that might be your point, is they might be choosing one mechanism or the other, but their ability is the same as the Riley County Police Department.
Yeah, my take on it is, we're being pushed pretty heavy by administration at K-State to put the ordinance in place and fine people, yet they have the ability to do that through their own police department, and it appears they are not doing that. And that's the only issue I wanted to raise. I appreciate your response, Katie. Excellent.
Let me just speak to the enforcement piece and that K-State pushed us to do this. K-State didn't push us to do anything. We were discussing it far before K-State wanted to do it. In fact, in May, they recommended we don't do it. So it's not we're doing it because of K-State. It was a measure we were already going to take and were having discussions about anyway. The reason we already had a second discussion is not only because of Kansas State University, but because the governor had made a mandate for the state, and then the counties opted out, and that's when the cities started doing it on their own. That's when Wichita did it before we did, in fact. So this conversation is not only because of them, or only because of Fort Riley, or because of somebody else. This discussion was happening far before then. The enforcement piece, we should probably discuss, and we do have President Myers as well as Lynda Cook from Kansas State University and Director Butler. So Director Butler, would you like to speak to the enforcement piece of this?
Yeah, I want to just quickly comment. You come in real broken on this Zoom thing, unfortunately, because you're wearing masks and people are coming up close to the microphone. So I didn't understand anything that you just basically mentioned, except that I know originally, K-State did not come out in favor of this, but the recent letter we got definitely came out in favor of it, and that's what I was referring to.
Thank you. Go ahead, Director Butler. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city commission and city manager. Thanks for having me tonight. As I'm speaking, I may take my mask off because I haven't figured out the glass fogging and mask at the same time, so bear with me. You know, this issue has been one that has been very divisive in not only our community, but our state and country. And there's a couple of things I'd like to cover to provide some perspective. I receive emails all the time about this from citizens, countless. I can't even tell you how many, and from city officials, county officials, and so on. And I responded to a woman the other day who had emailed me expressing a frustration over us not being more aggressive in our enforcement. And she cited some things that she wanted us to do, like close businesses. She wanted the police department to close businesses for non-compliance. And so I wrote her back and explained some of the things that we can and can't do, not specifically, but I just want, it's very brief. I just wanted to read to you what I wrote to her because it covers a lot of the types of communications I've been receiving. And what I wrote was, "I appreciate you sharing your concerns and suggestions. There are some in the community who think we should not be involved in enforcing the mask ordinance at all, while others think we should be doing much more. I view both positions respectfully and recognize the divisiveness of this issue here and elsewhere. Also, the avalanche of ever-changing governors and local orders along with the mask ordinance has created quite a bit of confusion regarding the authority we have and how it should be used. I am very aware of the effect COVID-19 has had on the lives of many people and have had firsthand experience with members of my immediate family." She started talking about people losing their jobs and their housing and getting sick. And I said, "I expect the criticism of my approach will continue, and I will continue to do my very best to lead this department and serve this county and cities within it ethically, candidly, fairly, and thoughtfully." To be clear, I'm not suggesting that you are being critical of me, but if you are, it's understandable. And so this covers really a lot of different types of communications I've received. But I wanted to also talk about the enforcement approach that we've taken since the beginning. It's been consistent. When this was first discussed, I talked about our posture of trying to educate people and bring them into compliance and only issue citations when we have no choice left. After over four weeks, I personally was surprised we had not issued any citations. I was constantly asking my staff about it, and they were giving me a feedback on what they were encountering. It's really just coincidental this week, the end of last week, we ran into two businesses on successive nights that made it pretty clear earlier in the week when we had visited, just a day or two earlier, that they had no intention of complying with the mask ordinance. So after all of our efforts to encourage compliance, in some cases, hand out masks, they really put us in the position where the officers had no choice but to issue a citation, and that's what they did. So earlier, or yesterday morning, a citizen that I was speaking with was aware of these two citations being issued, and they asked me, "So, is your plan now to start issuing more citations?" And don't take this out of context, not you, but anybody listening. I said, "My plan was never to issue a lot of citations. My plan from the beginning has been consistently to encourage compliance, which we've been successful at doing. And when we have to, and we have no choice, then we will issue citations. We may not issue another citation, or we may issue five this week. I just don't know." The officers have clear understanding of what my guidance is on how to address these things. Each situation is different. What they see at that moment is different when we respond to calls or if they see something happening. It's all different, and they have to make an assessment on what's appropriate for that particular situation. Just out of curiosity, and this is my last comment, and I'll take some questions if you have any. I went back and looked at our 2019 traffic enforcement statistics for the county, so it wasn't just Manhattan. And our officers in our system made about 9,400 traffic stops in the county in 2019. Of those numbers, they issued 3,900 citations. The rest were warnings. So the approach that we're taking with this ordinance violation, which has been likened to a traffic infraction in terms of enforcement, is the same approach we've taken in other similar types of situations. Now, this doesn't even count how many times an officer, and I can't quantify that, who has been driving down the street or engaged in another activity and saw what is probably, could be a traffic violation, not using a turn signal, maybe just barely making a light, not yielding to someone else, who never made a stop for whatever reason. And I'm sure there's plenty of those as well. So I think it's, just for context, it's important to know that the approach we're taking is a consistent one, I think, and the other things that we do. And earlier today, the assistant director was telling me, and I wasn't here, but it's a similar approach I've taken before, that in the past, when the smoking ordinance was passed and when the no-cellphone while-driving ordinance was passed, he told me they spent up to a year just warning people and issuing warnings to make sure people were educated and aware before they started issuing citations in earnest. You were here, I wasn't. I'm assuming that that is correct, but that is consistent with the way I've approached new ordinances throughout my career and how they're handled. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Thank you. I do look at the citations, and when I was on law board, I looked at all of the citations you would give, and I still do. I still read all your law board packets every single month.
Good. I wish more people would.
I read them pretty thoroughly. So one of the things is COVID is, we're hoping is just here temporarily. So we don't have a year to educate people or to train people. This is it. We get one shot at this and to get it right. And since the news media, the cycle everywhere you go is 24/7, you can't get away from COVID. That's it. So I would assume, fairly assume, that people know about face masks. They may not agree with them. They might have a different philosophy about face masks and use, but they certainly know about them because the country is extremely divided with face mask use. The students that are here, our population that is here, knows about face masks. If you live in Kansas, you know hundreds, well, 90 counties probably opted out of it because that's constantly in the news. When you speak of warnings, I think it's fair to warn people, hey, you need to wear a face mask, give them one when you're speeding, stop them. But I feel like in this instance, it's almost by complaint, as though I need to see somebody or somebody else has to see somebody and then call it in and say, "I think they're out of violation." Those are the emails we're getting. Those are the emails I get. I'm sure I'm getting just as many emails as you are regarding COVID-19. And the other piece to this, I could be wrong, but I need some clarification, is that if you warn a business or an individual, let's say, "Hey, you're out of compliance. You need to be wearing a face mask," so they're warned. Does the warning start again the next day and the next day, or is it one warning, you're done. If I see this, we're going to have to fine you. How do you do that?
Well, in answer to that part of your question, it depends on the officer. If they record, if they get the person's name and put it into our system and indicate a warning was issued, then it would be in there for future reference if the person or the business is visited again. Going back to only responding to complaints, I do want to let you know that we do track when officers are visiting businesses specifically to check for compliance. And we communicated, after, excuse me, the first ticket was written, we communicated that to Mr. Cook with the ABA. And we listed all of the businesses that we visited that night and what we found, and we cited one because of their unwillingness to come into compliance. And I also want to point out that those proactive visits occur outside of Aggieville. I saw businesses listed down off of Kimball, restaurants down there, the downtown area, and down Anderson Avenue. So Aggieville's not being targeted like some of the messaging I received. They believe that's the case. So there is proactive visits going on, similar to what we would call bar checks, to make sure that businesses with liquor licenses are in compliance with the regulations they have to follow when they're serving alcohol.
So once again, my question is, if you warn them once, you said it goes into some kind of database of some kind. So if you go back and check them again, and then they're fined?
Not necessarily. It's up to the officer's discretion, depending on the circumstances they encounter the next time they come across that person. It's always different. For me, it would be irresponsible for me to say, like in a traffic situation, every time you see this, you will issue a citation, and I'm just not going to take that approach. I've mentioned before, and I think it's worth repeating again, there's a certain climate going on in this country that has nothing to do with COVID and has to do with other things, and I am keenly aware of that. And I'm keenly aware of that even before the current situation that we're facing. Preserving the trust in this department, our judgment, how we exercise our authority is very important once we emerge from the crisis that we're in with COVID. And I am doing my very best to preserve that and not overreach, overenforce, or become an occupying force in the minds of many, some of whom already think we are because we've issued two citations. Again, I read that email that I sent out today. So it's a balance. It's a playbook I've never had a play in before, and I'm kind of feeling my way along and doing what I think is best. And I'll do that every day, but I'm not going to issue... Again, when you talked about this on July 7th, I'll say this. I talked about my concern about our capacity to enforce this effectively and fairly, and that's still the case. We do not possess the resources or the capacity to stop 20 kids walking down the street who don't have masks on and then start issuing them citations. First of all, they could keep walking and not stop, and one officer's not going to be able to stop them. It's up to the officers with what they see and the decisions they make.
And you said there were two businesses, but when I looked on the citations, I only saw one. The other one in Aggieville was for food prep or something.
Not familiar with that one. We had one that was issued Thursday night, and that's been reported in the news as O'Malley's, and then there was one issued the next night at Tubby's.
The one at Tubby's, when I looked at it, it said a food citation of some kind, but I will look back and check again. I only saw one face mask violation.
There were two.
Are there questions for Director Butler? Or comments? Do you have something, Aaron? Did you want to?
Oh, okay. I would like to, Commissioner Haddas, I think you guys have got the right approach to this thing. There's only so much you can do to change human behavior, and young people, if they start trying to enforce the ordinance in Aggieville too much, they're going to go have house parties because that's what kids do. They get together, and they have fun, they find somebody to get them some beer, and they have a party. Whether that's in Aggieville, where they're hounded about wearing a mask, or whether it's at a house party where nobody gives a hoot about wearing a mask, they're going to pick one or the other. And if you drive them out of Aggieville by cracking down too tight, off they go into the neighborhoods where there will be zero ability, there will be nobody, I don't think you're going to walk around neighborhoods and poke your head into parties to see if people are wearing their masks at the parties. But that's what's going to happen here, so you're going to have to show some restraint because it'll make the problem worse because there will be no mask-wearing by anybody in their own personal homes, partying with their friends, because that happens all the time. I've got a college-age daughter. It happens.
Yeah, your comment reminded me of something President Myers said earlier. We did check the calls for service at the fraternity house where there was an outbreak, just to see if we had responded to any party calls there, and we had not. The last call we had gone to there was over a fire alarm, and I think it was about a week or so ago. So our opinion, and that's all it is, was that the COVID was brought here from when they came to school. It didn't occur, at least at a party at that house.
And when I say houses, I don't mean fraternity houses. I mean individual houses, three or four people living there having a party for 30 people.
Right. Yeah, I knew what you meant. Thank you.
And these are community, I mean, when you're in a university city or a community of a town-gown relationship, parties happen. We know that. The other piece to this is the only way we're going to mitigate or reduce the spread is if a majority, if not everybody, is in some form of compliance. Because human nature, especially in anybody between 18 and 23, is to be two inches from each other's face, not six feet. And the only strategy we really have is a face mask. So this isn't to say it's somebody's fault. It's to see how can we reduce the spread of the virus. And that's my charge, and that's my goal. And you can read my emails. I get lots of threats and hatred all over the place. It's not going to stop me because this community is too important. So I understand the predicament you're in and the predicament that Kansas State University is in. But the outcome that I would like to achieve with this is worth the fight. So that's where my dedication and commitment is. When we do Fake Patty's Day, we do walk around. And when you're a city commissioner, we go to zoning sites, construction sites, pothole sites, flooding sites. That's the nature of the job. We take pictures. We send them off to all kinds of people. So this isn't an intrusion of some kind. Brian and I go to plenty of events, not just because of COVID. For the past seven years, since I was elected, we went all over the city doing all kinds of things, taking pictures, posting them. This was my last-ditch effort when I put it on Facebook, and that's why I'm here. And that's why I'm here, because this community is too important. It's too important, and I don't want to take any risks. I don't care what people say about me or authority or enforcement. We're trying to reduce the spread of the virus, and that's my goal.
And as I wrote in the email, I respect everybody's position on this, whose passion in one way or another. And then we are doing what we can and we are exercising our authority the way I think it should be. And that's what we will continue to do. Even to your comment about reducing the spread and stopping the virus, I completely agree with that. And I'm not against wearing masks, but I don't think that if we started writing every single person that appeared to be in violation, that we would do what you are trying to accomplish. But we would lose a lot more in the long run in terms of how your police department is viewed by the members of this community. And I care a lot about that as well.
We're not close to any other.
Commissioner Butler, I want to say, Director Butler, I appreciate what RCPD is doing out there. I think you're handling it 100% correct in the best manner possible. And I know some of the details of the two citations. And your hand was forced and the people just, it's crazy. It's like if one of your officers stopped me and said, hey, Butler, here's a warning ticket, you were 10 miles over the speed limit, and I tore it up and threw it back at him. You know, what do I expect? I'm going to end up getting a citation. So, I think, you know, the actions you're taking are absolutely in line, and that was the intent. Originally, when we talked about this, we said, oh, we want education. I think even the mayor said she didn't want to see people get citations for huge amounts of money. And so, the way you're executing the intent of the ordinance as originally put in place is spot on. And I thank you and all of your officers for doing a great job out there.
Thank you. Did you say you wanted to hear from Kansas State?
Yes, I had something to add, though, before, and it ties into, well, Katie had mentioned the MOU with K-State and how the enforcement of that, I don't know if you wanted to speak to that, but before that, I also wanted to touch on, seems like that unfortunately, Commissioner Haddasol often predicts the future when he says, surely this can't happen. And I remember that, and I don't say that in a mean way, because a lot of things we have been, have happened that nobody predicted. But with the enforcement of a local health order in Riley County, for example, and what you talked about, you know, if you do something in Aggieville or in bars and people then go into house party situations, that is, that's something I just wanted to say, you know, it is, it's very tricky. I think you pointed out about putting your officers at risk and going into situations where they could get COVID just by, you know, being at house parties and policing those. But it's something that I think unfortunately may be headed in our direction and we should prepare for even if we don't want it to happen, just like we've had to prepare for to get to this point. And so, that's just, I wanted to put that out there. So, just Fake Patty's Day, it's literally the situation we've had in the last week. And maybe if, you know, compliance doesn't get better, if things don't change, if the local health officer decides something, we're put in that situation where your officers are asked to do things. And it's frustrating for students and people that live here to have to get to a point where things have to be taken away or, you know, to put more officers and first responders at risk. But if you want to speak to the MOU or if I'd like to hear more about K-State, how that kind of shakes out?
I can just give you the quick down and dirty basics. The MOU exists between us and Kansas State University. The KSU PD officers have primary jurisdiction on their campus and all of KSU's properties that are off the campus. If they request our assistance to help them with anything, we will respond and vice versa. So, we don't routinely patrol the K-State campus to issue citations for this offense. But if they requested our assistance for this or anything else, then we would respond. We would use our same approach, we always do. But they have primary jurisdiction on the campus, but we can enforce it there.
So, there is consistency in other regard, I mean, in terms of enforcement of an ordinance, there could be, there's consistency.
Well, their enforcement posture, I can't say it's exactly the same as mine. I'm just talking about the authority to enforce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We might call you back.
Yeah, I'll wait.
If Linda or President Myers would like to speak, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Commissioners. This is Linda Cook, Chief of Staff and Director of Community Relations for Kansas State University. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the leadership action back in July to enact a face mask ordinance. Lot of scientific data that has come out and continues to come out supports the effectiveness of face masks in stopping the spread of the virus. In fact, Dr. Deborah Burks, who is the White House Coordinator for the COVID-19 Task Force and a respected infectious disease expert, was in Kansas City just this past weekend. Earlier, a couple of weeks ago, she had talked about the fact that face masks are like the number-one defense in helping to stop the spread of the virus and gave an alert then that we needed to watch out in rural communities such as the Midwest because they're starting to see a greater impact of the virus in more rural communities. This past weekend, when she was in Kansas City, Kansas, one of the things she pointed out was Kansas, be careful because the COVID is still around, you are very susceptible. Even though your positive cases have plateaued, you have plateaued at a very high rate. And she said the thing you can really do is help yourself with the face masks and with the social distancing and the hand sanitizing. Three basic things that can help us move beyond this pandemic in this community. So, we are here to, I know you've received a letter from President Myers, but I'm here to reiterate the support in extending this face mask requirement. Human behavior just tells you, if given rules and guidance, people will follow it. And we actually saw that happen back in July when there was a little blip in there where Riley County actually did have a face mask order and it went into effect overnight. Now, there are two places I go to right now. It's Target and Dylan's. And I went to Dylan's the next day. I'd been in Dylan's before and saw maybe 25% of the people with face masks on. That very next day, I was in Dylan's and there were only two people in the store that didn't have face masks on. So, it's that little bit of guidance, it's that nudge, people will follow it. Yes, it may be an inconvenience, but it's our shot at trying to keep our schools open, trying to help keep other businesses open. And as President Myers said earlier, 90% of the people can do this, but it's that 10% if they're not doing it that can pull the entire system down. Now, on the enforcement issue, Lynn and I did talk about this issue. And Kansas State University, we are requiring face masks. And we're going through a lot of training, talking with the faculty, the staff, and the students, and it will continue to go on. But again, it's not to crack down and be mean on people, it is to help educate them. So, the enforcement we have on campus is to have faculty and supervisors talk with employees and with students if they're not wearing their face masks and get them to wear it. You know, if there is an enforcement that if they refuse to wear their face masks, then the process is, take them through the student discipline process and through the employee discipline process. Right now, we're talking with people. And we're working very closely with campus police. If somebody refuses to wear a face mask, the enforcement part there is they will help calm the situation down and get that person either out of the classroom or out of the office. If it's a visitor coming to campus, that same type of thing would happen. Deescalate the situation, you know, remove the hazard and move forward from there. But we firmly believe that the face mask usage is a number-one line of defense in helping to stop the spread of the virus. And we ask for your support in extending this ordinance to help us keep this community open, whether it be businesses, the schools, and just events, the things that need to happen in Manhattan. They can happen. We just need to follow those three basic rules. Face masks, social distancing, hand hygiene. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, did you have any other questions for them? Linda, did you have any comments? Otherwise, we can move on to a motion if nobody has anything.
I don't really have any questions. I think you've talked about the relationship between the two police departments, and I think that's helpful for us to understand because we don't look at your MOUs very often. So, appreciated Director Butler's explanation and yours. And you're using the tools you have, and that's what we need to do also. And we have the ability and, you know, the inconsistency of jurisdictions is unfortunate. But there are certain leaderships that have failed, and I think this city has an obligation. I mean, Katie mentioned that over half of the population in Kansas is covered by a face mask. And that is, they are the bigger cities. We are one of the bigger cities, seventh, sixth, whatever. And so, it's certainly appropriate that we, my original thinking is, was that Fort Riley requires masks of their personnel on and off the post. K-State requires masks once you step foot on your curb. And rather than having this inconsistent jurisdiction business, it's up to our city to make that across the board so people, there is no confusion here. And that's what I want, is that consistency. I want the safety it brings. We're all trying and we're all pulling together, which is what we've been doing. That's why our numbers are as low as they are. They're higher than we want, but they're low as they are. And because the majority of people have been cooperating, as you say, you know, give us a boundary, we'll do it. If you don't, if you're not clear, if it confuses, then there'll be resistance or out-and-out defiance. I mean, there's that, too. And so, this is what we can do here. And I'm not that concerned about the, you know, the feed yard up in the north part of the county. We have the majority of people here in this county, in the Manhattan area. I am interested in having the east part of our city be, the rules be consistent there because, you know, we're all one city when you stop and think about it, and we need to act like one. So, anyway, that's, I just, I'm sharing my perspective and boring Linda.
Never bored, never bored.
Thank you, Linda, and Linda Cook as well. I think K-12 will also be requiring it, not only for their teachers, but their students as they move into this hybrid form. The other piece to this?
One other thing, and that is exactly that. If we want our community to stay safe and open, we will do this because K-State closed before in spring semester. There's no guarantee, depends on how bad it gets, whether they do switch to online or whether they close and whether they leave the students in the dorms. I mean, I imagine their conversations are all over the place and there's no decision. But K through 12, there's a protocol they've adopted, and their State Department of Education has given them some protocols, some standards. And so, you know, I don't want our community to close again. And so, we can make sure that happens by our actions today collectively.
Right. Again, this isn't about hospitalizations and deaths or ventilators?
I wanted to make a comment, just, you know, I agree with what Linda Morris has said. I think everybody should wear a mask. We don't want to do a lockdown. That's crazy. But I think we should follow the example K-State has. They've got an enforcement policy that doesn't criminalize not wearing a mask. But our policy criminalizes it. To quote Katie Jackson, it's part of the criminal code. So, I always was for, in favor of, and I think Mark would probably go along with it too, a resolution that takes that education approach. And it mandates it, and we let everybody know, but we stop putting RCPD in a position of writing those tickets. Because KSU Police is not in that position, and that's the thing that's out of alignment. You know, Linda was talking about alignment. Well, that's way out of alignment. The enforcing mechanisms are out of alignment, and that's my primary issue.
Okay, thank you. Mark, did you want to add something before I come to a close here?
Oh, yeah. I've got lots of comments, but I'll try to keep them short. You get compliance from people on rules and regulations and laws when they understand the value of them. And that's the problem we're running into is that the people outright rebelling do not see that the value of keeping the mask on all the time, the businesses either don't want to be told what to do or they don't see the value in the mask. But that's the missing thing. You get compliance when you have the consent of the governed, and I've harped on that a few times before. People have to buy into it. They're not buying into the not texting and driving thing because they keep doing that. And people don't speed, and luckily, there's no motorcycle helmet law for me to break because I'm never going to wear one in the state of Kansas if I can help it. But that's my choice there. Nothing I say tonight is going to change anybody's mind up here, but on behalf of the hundreds of people that didn't get the memo that they were supposed to email the city commissioner and express their opinion tonight, I thought I'd point out what other people who didn't have time to email the commission are thinking about. And first of all, it's not necessarily the mask thing that's dividing people, it's the COVID thing that's dividing people. We're at, nationwide, we're at five and a half million cases, I think, and five and a quarter million people have recovered. And so, it's, we're, the point of, and here in Riley County, we finally hit, 1% of the people have tested positive, and 1% of that 1% has passed away. And there's some arguments as to whether COVID was the cause or just an auxiliary diagnosis. The point being is that, I said earlier, that Julie Gibbs has said that 80% of people are being tested now are asymptomatic. It's hard to convince somebody that they're sick and are going to die when they don't have any symptoms. And so, that's, the thing is continuing to cry wolf when we should be crying jackal or hyena. There's something out there that's getting the weakest and the most elderly and frail among us, and those people need to do everything they feel comfortable that they need to do in order to feel safe. If they want to wear a mask, social distance, live in a cave, it's America, it's a free country, go do that. But don't make me move into a cave, too, if I don't want to, because, just because that's part of that deal. We've got emails about people worried about people's mental health. Well, of course, people's mental health is deteriorating. Every day, they're being scared to death that the COVID is going to get them if they don't sanitize their hands, wear their mask, and stay six feet away from people. You can't keep that up. The models that they use to shut down K-State, 2 million people in the United States are going to die from the COVID this year. Well, crap, I'd have closed the college, too, in a situation like that. But when 1% of the people get it, 80% of the people are asymptomatic, it's hard to figure out why everybody's so scared of this thing. And I don't know who benefits from scaring the crap out of people all the time, but we got to stop because it's just not, there's, I'm sorry for your niece, that's a terrible deal. And there's, like I said, there's going to be a very small percentage of the people that are affected. But we need to start, instead of weekly and daily announcements, six new cases of COVID, why don't we say eight cases of COVID recovered today? How about 20 new cases tested positive, they're all asymptomatic and feeling fine? Or how about, yeah, we're treating these people at home with rest and orange juice? Instead of, you commented, it's not about hospitalizations and death. Well, that's what's important, staying at home when you've got a cough and a headache is not newsworthy. And so, that's, why don't we try spinning this thing and pointing out how things are getting better? 99% of people are recovering, yay! 99% of people aren't getting it, yay! How about everybody's recovering? Nobody's dying. The hospital don't have anybody, I don't think, maybe one or two right now, but they had that big spike in... don't think, maybe one or two right now, but they had that big spike in early July or late June, two people in the hospital for a week or something. There's just, the people getting it now are young, healthy people that aren't getting symptoms, and so that is why they're not wearing their masks. And so Winn is exactly right, the enforcement, unless you've got a really big hammer, they don't see the danger in it, and you're never going to change that until you can, until you just hit them really hard, and this just isn't worth it for the average person. If you're at risk, keep doing what you need to do. I don't think there's a lot of interaction between the college kids and the elderly necessarily, so there shouldn't be a lot of this asymptomatic carrier stuff. That works pretty good in recessive genes and traits and such. I'm not convinced that that's a big cause of the spread here, but that's for another day. So I'm going to stop talking, but the point being is, most everybody is not that ill, so we can ask people to wear the masks, but we just can't keep beating people over the head to wear it when the risk for the average Joe, especially young people, isn't that bad, and they're never going to see that, I don't believe.
Thank you, Commissioner Hattasol. I don't think we're going to convince each other of to move on this, but I will say, if 10% positive is there in our community, K-12 will shut down. Our children deserve better. If you're concerned about K-State football, they're requiring masks, the Chiefs are requiring masks. This is a small piece that I don't want to argue about anymore, so we all know where we stand. I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Estabrook. I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 22-73 of the City Code, extending the term of the face mask ordinance requirements until 11:59 p.m. on December 31, 2020.
I second the motion. Linda Morris.
Thank you. Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Fisher Butler?
No.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Fisher Hattasol?
No.
Thank you.
Motion carries 3 to 2.
Thank you. Ron, do we have anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. We are adjourned.